Good morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. Good morning, thank you. We've got a lot on the agenda. We've got a lot of people in this room. We've got a lot to talk about, so probably the sooner we get started, the better. So we'll call this meeting to order. I'll note for the record that we are all present. Councilmember Duff, however, is with us virtually, and we wish her the best. I know she's been a little under the weather, so Jen, good to see you. Hope you're feeling well. And my understanding is Mr. Freeman is not joining us.
Well, he was going to try to join us by phone.
Right, okay. I do see another one.
Maybe that's him.
Mr. Freeman, are you on the line?
Oh, yeah, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for today is to review our agenda for this coming Monday's meeting, so let's go through that. I know that Mr. Brady's staff has a few presentations on items on Monday's agenda.
We do, Mayor, thank you. We'll start with item 5B. Jared, if you want to come forward and give us a little briefing on this item. This is a unique opportunity for the city, and we wanted to visit with the council about this.
5B. Welcome, Jared, from the IDEA Museum. Good to see you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Really honored to be here today and grateful to talk about the IDEA Museum's big idea, which is our renovation project. We're mainly going to be just providing a very, very brief overview about this project for an agenda item that's related to a contribution from Meta. Please note that we will be back after the new year to talk about this project in much more detail, about the experiences we're developing, as well as the future phases that are going to be a part of this project. I do know we do have our presentation here. So as I mentioned, this is a very brief overview, but I did want to provide just a little bit of context of what we were tasked to do. And the main task was to make the museum world-class. The Arts and Culture Department of the City of Mesa has such tremendous arts and culture institutions, and the Mesa Art Center is one of the pride and joys as this world-class institution. We do want to make sure that our other museums are up to that level, and that's what we're being asked from both councils, city management, and our community. We want to maximize our public program space as the museum continues to grow. Talk about that just a little bit more. We want to make sure that our spaces are highly interactive with new and unique programming. We are stationed or housed in an old grocery store, but there are some unique architectural elements in there, so we want to showcase those as budget allows. And we do need to update some of our systems functionality as the building is varying age ranges of 70 to 30 years in age, or 20 years in age. But most importantly, I would say, is we want to utilize community feedback and data to determine what the next iteration of the IDEA Museum looks like. So again, just very briefly, over the last 18 months, we've been working very diligently to collect feedback from the community, so we have feedback from over 3,000 community members that's looking at, you know, what should the IDEA Museum be? What are families asking for? And what we've been seeing is that families are asking for more interactive experiences. Families are saying the IDEA Museum is in need of an update because it is an older facility and building. Families want expanded age ranges, not necessarily up to the teens, but looking at siblings that come to the museum. How can we create open-ended experiences that engage families of a variety of ages? As well as incorporating more STEM, or science experiments, science experiences within our arts experiences as well. So again, several thousand community members have provided feedback of what the IDEA Museum should look like, and we'll provide more context as we come back later in January with the details and more specific of these spaces. I mentioned museum continues to grow, so last fiscal year, we were up over 50% compared to prior year. We're up about 30% this year, and we're on track to serve over 120,000 children and families in our community, and that is a substantial record for the IDEA Museum. Membership sales continue to increase as well, and I believe that's one of the most important metrics that you look at for museums, because it shows long-term engagement with our mission and our experiences, and we're seeing a lot of great growth there as well, with over 2,000 households in our community being members. This project and subsequent future phases of this project are supported by both bond, city funding, and through our foundation. So the foundation has launched a capital campaign amounting to about $2.5 million. And as part of this, we've been working with city management to look at naming right opportunities for this phase and future phases. So we do have some naming right opportunities in the range of $500 to over $1 million, depending on the size of contribution and space available. But the agenda item coming up here is related to Meta. So as you all know, Meta has been a part of this community for several years, or a couple of years now, and has been really great supporters of our community. They have been engaged with the educational work that the City of Mesa has been doing, as well as other organizations within our community. And we've been working with Meta for about 18 months now to talk about this iteration of the IDEA Museum, what we're trying to create, and the need within the community. And Meta has recently come back and said they'd like to contribute to this project. They'd like to contribute $300,000 to the IDEA Museum through the IDEA Museum Foundation for this project. $250,000 of this donation would go directly to the exhibit development, which is being funded through the capital campaign for the IDEA Museum Foundation. With that, there would be naming rights associated with it, and I'll showcase those in just a second here. But this is for a particular space called the IDEA Lab. Meta has also offered an additional $50,000 to the IDEA Museum in the City of Mesa, and that is to create more accessibility programming for our community. So that allows us to have more free admission events, or allow families who are going through financial challenges to come to the museum who traditionally wouldn't come. So it's a really great holistic approach to create new experiences, but also allow families to come to the museum who typically wouldn't be able to come to the museum. And what you're seeing right here is just an architectural rendering of the space and how we could present naming rights to Meta. So it would be the IDEA Lab by Meta showcasing their name and their logo. This particular space would be a mesh and look at the intersection of art and science. So how can you create art in a digital environment? How can you create and showcase both those intersections together? Meta would have naming rights for approximately, or for 10 years, once the contract would be signed between Meta. And after 10 years, Meta would have first right of refusal to continue their sponsorship or to pass that on to another organization who might be interested in it. Over the last year, we have worked with the attorney's office, as well as city management, to look at our process for determining naming rights, and that we do have a full contract that spells out the terms as part of this agreement, and if there are things that come up, if we need to cancel this agreement, and how we go about doing that for different circumstances. We'll talk about the, that process later on. It's not necessarily part of this presentation. But as part of this next phase, there's also going to be some work done to the front entrance. We want to make sure that as families come into the museum, they are really excited about our experiences, they're excited about coming into the museum, they want to go in. Right now, our front entrance is not that engaging, so we want to do some work to it in this phase, but there will be more work done to it in a future phase. But really, that is it for the presentation. Again, this is just to showcase and to spotlight the incredible contribution from Meta, and answer any questions that might come for this agenda item that's happening on Monday.
Thank you, Jared. Council, questions on this item? I'll just recognize and thank Councilmember Spillsbury for serving on your board, and she's always a great advocate for the IDEA Museum, as I hope I am. I think this is, we're all very proud of the IDEA Museum. As I travel around, it's one thing I've learned is that great cities have great children's museums, and Mesa is no exception. But as we all agree, this museum is a little out of date, and it could, it needs some community support to be that world-class facility that we aspire to have. And so, very grateful to Meta for their, being a great community member and coming in and embracing the IDEA Museum. So I think this is wonderful. I'm seeing heads nod.
Great.
Thanks, Jared.
This won't be the last. There are several other donors we are working with at this level that are excited to be a part of this project, too, so I look forward to presenting that in future dates. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Jared. Mr. Brady, what else on our Monday's?
So, yes, thank you, Mayor. So we do have a presentation for 5D, and then following that, we'll have a presentation on 5F and G.
Welcome, Natalie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this morning. I wanted to talk to you about a project that has been almost a long time coming for many of us. We've been before city council several times to talk about this, and it, we're calling it the Bridge to Success and Housing at the East Valley Men's Center. Members of A New Leaf and their team and management are here if the council has more questions after this presentation. But of course, this is right in the middle, in this Bridge to Success area. This is really meant for success cases. These are people who, at the campus, or in Mesa, and off the streets, have demonstrated success. They are holding down a job, they're making, you know, progress on their housing path. And so, these are people that might need just a little bit more time to stabilize and make sure that they have the time to find housing that's a little bit more permanent for them. And this has been a gap in our system and something that we've wanted to build on. So the request for city council, which is on Monday's agenda, is to approve up to $9.5 million in ARPA funding, and it includes 30 studio bridge housing units. It includes updated landscaping, fencing. They're going to update the existing building facades and make other improvements in the parking, just to make sure that the whole campus feels like a master-planned experience, and that it becomes an asset that the neighborhood likes to have next door to them as far as the aesthetics goes, and it also would cover any initial startup costs. This is the proposed site plan of the existing campus today. Those, these items in gray are the existing buildings, and north here is where the bridge housing would come into play. It's basically 15 units and two stories. It also includes a 3,000-square-foot community service center, which would have services both for the bridge housing and also for the existing campus. And then it includes a facade, an area outside, and a ramada that allows them to have some outdoor space as well. These are some early conceptual site plans that they see this looking at. You can see the building in the background. On the right is that center I just talked about and the ramada. A little bit higher of a viewpoint, so you can see the space a little bit better. This is from Lehigh Road, if you were standing in front, and what you would see over time. This is a view from Country Club of the existing facilities to show how they're trying to tie in and create that master-planned campus.
Natalie, I think we should mention, I think, last time we were having this discussion, there was a comment, I think it was Councilman Freeman, about wanting to address the facade of that existing building.
Yes.
You know, if we're going to make improvements in the back, that we should look at improving the front of the existing buildings, along with the screening that you see here, and that's, I think Natalie's presenting, is kind of, we're trying to respond to that. A New Leaf is responding to that inquiry.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brady. And so, this is, this is part of the $9.5 million that's built into it, and again, they just, they want to be a good neighbor. They want to have that presence that, you know, that doesn't look like it's rundown, that doesn't look like it's overused. Today, it does, and so they want to just upgrade that and, you know, be a good part of the neighborhood. This is one more view from Country Club as the landscaping starts to grow. And then, A New Leaf has also worked with us on several other commitments that have been important to city council as we've come through this process, and one of them is how they define Mesa residency. And so, part of this agreement that council will take action on on Monday includes language that, changes that to a direct referral from the police department, or one of our park rangers, or an off-the-streets partner, or their last-known address and zip code is in Mesa, and it's there for, they live there for a minimum of one year. They've also agreed to ensure that there's a minimum of an annual, or an average, 50% use each year of both their emergency housing and their proposed bridge housing. This is in recognition to knowing that they are a regional facility, and they do take regional clients, but Mesa has been very good to them and has been an amazing partner. They've agreed to no Level 2 or 3 sex offenders. They are upgrading their campus to have that master-planned feel to add to the neighborhood like we just talked about. They have just begun a new model where participants in the emergency housing stay on-site during day. Previously, when they would get up in the morning, they would basically go out into the neighborhood, some of them going to jobs, some of them doing other things that were related to their recovery, but neighbors saw them in the neighborhood, and it was concerning to them. And so, A New Leaf is working on this. This is fairly new. They're going to continue improving this as it moves forward, but they have agreed to continue that model for the long term. They, as part of the services on the center, are going to be adding some basic health care. One of the things that we discovered is that our Mesa Fire and Medical Department spends a lot of time sending crews to the East Valley Men's Center, so this will reduce that and save us money in that department, but also overall help us even out our service citywide. And any unsuccessful participants in these, we will look for ways to either send them back to emergency housing on campus if needed, to off-the-streets, or to another facility that best meets that person's needs. So again, the request on Monday, oh.
I have a question, Natalie. Under the new definition of Mesa residency, is that you have to fulfill both of those bullet points? That's an "and" or an "or"?
It's an "or."
Okay, so either they're referred by a Mesa police officer, or they have to have...
Yes, and we've done the same thing with our Off the Streets program. Our goal has always been if we have a police officer or a park ranger, and they've been working on building a relationship with someone in the field, and they are ready to get help, we want to get them help. And we don't want to have any, you know, we don't want questions asked. And so, we wanted to make sure that we had that same kind of a philosophy here, so there's always room, and there's always the ability to help our troops out there in the field have a place to get people service.
Can I just talk about that for a second? Because I think one of, again, the goals of all of these efforts is to have that emergency shelter so that we are in compliance with the federal laws, you know, that say you can't enforce urban camping unless you have emergency shelter bids. So if we encounter someone in a park or in an alley, and we're saying, "I'm sorry, you can't live here," we have to have a place to, an alternative. And so, even if that person got off a bus yesterday from Chicago, you know, they're still camping in a Mesa park, and we have to have a locate, an alternative for that individual.
Yeah, Councilmember Go-Forth, it also relates to our goal of limiting the participants of the clients at the Off the Streets campus if the hotel is purchased and we move some of those clients there, because that would be families and people who are experiencing, or victims of domestic violence and elderly, so not necessarily the men. And so, this becomes a core place for us to use for the men.
So Natalie, is it fair to say, just like we do at, on the Off the Street programs, for us, this is only by referral? This isn't someone who can walk in? So this is the boogeyman that's out there in the conversation about homelessness, is these open campuses, and people can walk in and camp around these sites. That is not allowed, it's not how these systems work, it's not our model, we don't do it that way. So just like today at the Windermere, you can't just show up at the door or camp outside hoping to get services. And just like the hotel will be, and it's even more limited, but this is only referral basis. This is in order for us to stay in compliance with the Boise v. Martin. It allows for park rangers, it allows for police officers, who has someone who's willing and interested in shelter to be referred to these locations. We're not dragging people there because they don't want to be there, and this is someone, and I think what this next step, this next opportunity, is for those who come in the emergency shelter and now have an interest and are progressing towards stabilization, and we can find, now we're trying to find a place to kind of recognize and incentivize that if you're willing to make those steps to get a job, to get out of addiction, recovery, whatever, we can now find a place where you'll have, you know, instead of the emergency shelter, now you're in a little bit nicer place, we're trying to help you stabilize. And then the hope is, our goal, that they're not there for more than, how long was the number?
I think that's still to be determined, but it's usually around...
Yeah, some period of time, but we're going to, you know, they still have to progress, right? And then, the idea is that we then have an opportunity, if they can show progress there, we will find a way to get them into some kind of stabilized housing moving forward. So this is just our way of trying to create solutions to the homeless. It's not going to stop us seeing people who are homeless out in the community, because there's a lot of people that police officers and park rangers talk to, they're not interested, right? So we got to give, move them along, but these are people who are interested in trying to make a change in their life.
It also serves in some way as an incentive on the campus itself, because if you're coming in as, in the emergency program, which is, you know, a congregate setting, you can see, you know, the next step, and which you could get your own studio apartment and have a little bit more independence, and so it's also meant to be an incentive for the campus as a whole.
And I, you know, I understand this is a complex issue, but I think the concern in the community is that Mesa doesn't become the regional shelter for, you know, because we have the beds, so as soon as you cross into the line and you say, "I'm ready to get help," now we, and I understand, it's, you know, the Ninth Circuit opinion has put this on us, but I imagine we're working with other municipalities so that we are not...
Mayor, Councilmember Go-Forth, I think, yet at this, we agree, right? And we were very sensitive of that, and that's why we're very, working with A New Leaf. We really want them to appreciate that how much resources the city is dedicating so that it really, we kind of get the preference, right? We get the priority, because we can't stop the number of people who show up in Mesa that are homeless. We are sensitive, and that's why the Off the Street program is only for people that are found in Mesa by a police officer or a park ranger. And we're careful to how we manage other locations like this that also receive individuals maybe from Tempe and Scottsdale. But we have those conversations with A New Leaf, right? That is like, look how much money we're putting into this. We need to have the priority. And when those beds get filled, or they're filled with Mesa folks, you're full, right? So we're not, we agree. We are not interested in doing that. We wish there was more participation by some of our other communities, but at the same time, Phoenix wishes we would do more also. So, I mean, it's, we kind of have to balance that out. But we do, our intention really is, all these dollars is to help us manage the homelessness in Mesa. We're not trying to accommodate other communities, if that's the question. I think that's why we put these conditions in here. If we're going to contribute, then we want to make sure that we're creating more capacity for Mesa, not for somebody else.
As you say, it's hard to, because you do increase the capacity, right? Which is a catch 22.
But we're making sure that allocation gets to us. We're, I mean, we follow up. We know, we can get the list, because when they intake, they have to identify who they are, where they came from, so we can go back and audit to know whether or not we're getting those dollars.
And I think that that's something the council might want to see on a somewhat consistent basis, is that audit.
Yeah, you'd be glad to be there.
Who is it that we're serving?
Yeah, in fact, we've added the dashboard for the Off the Streets program to the website, so it's really easy for the public to hear about, based on another request from a council member, and so we can add this kind of information to that dashboard.
Sure.
I know Mr. Summers has something to say, but let me just point out that number one on the agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation for MAG on regional homelessness efforts. So this is a very important question, but we're about to tee it up. As soon as we get through reviewing Monday's agenda, that's the subject of this meeting.
All right. This is usually Julie's seat, and sometimes this doesn't work. Very pleased with the changes that are being made. It's focusing more on the homelessness issue for Mesa folks who become homeless. The concern, however, is $9.5 million is a lot of money, and I know it's, it's not general fund money specifically spells out in here that this is not general fund. This is all coming from ARPA dollars, but it's still tax dollars. 30 units for $9.5 million is $316,000 per unit, and to build an apartment complex right now is about $192,780 per unit. It seems to me for $9.5, we could get bigger bang for the butt. Do we have a budget for this, and why is it so expensive for, for a bunch of studios compared, oh, and that's, by the way, one-bedroom apartments.
But remember, this is...
And there's some other changes.
Well, no, there's other buildings. There's facade improvements, there's fencing.
Yeah.
So all of this has been vetted through engineering, design teams, they've all, you know, we're just in the estimated phase, but we have to allocate the dollars so we can move into the contracts.
Can we see the, can we see the proposed budget?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, the proposed budget is $9.5 million. We can show you how it's broken out between the housing...
All of those different uses.
But again, these are engineers, these are design teams that are higher professionals that are providing assessments.
Yes, and we could get more information about how much these kinds of units go for, because they have special needs, and they're built in a way that, they're built to last. And so, I mean, we want this asset to be available to us for at least 50 years.
We're not building a multifamily unit sitting on the edge of the city somewhere. These are...
So this is different.
I just want to see what the value is for these units, because that's, that's all.
It's apples and oranges to what you just mentioned.
But again, it's more than the units. We talked about the other buildings, and whole other buildings and fencing, or building, we're improving the facade.
But I can get you that information.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Spillsbury.
Hi, thank you. And I can't remember, these are individual units, just one person would be in each of these units, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I know, I wish we could build 60 instead of 30, so. I'm going to be picky. Is slide four, isn't north the other direction?
Oh, maybe I got it wrong.
I just want to make sure, isn't north facing Lehigh Road?
Well, it's, Country Club comes across...
Yeah.
North would be facing the river.
Yeah, so wouldn't that be this way? Anyways, I just, I've been out to this facility several times, and I think north is up.
Okay.
North is pointing east.
Just so that I make sure I know.
The orientation of the map is...
That was my fault.
No.
This is one of those things I'm not good at.
I'm not trying to prove you wrong, I just want to make sure that in my head, where I'm thinking where this is, this is right.
You're correct.
Okay. And then, I think I also have misunderstood something in the past that I just want to clarify. I, I thought I was under the impression that ARPA dollars couldn't be used for new buildings, just for like renovating, and so I heard that through the homeless hotel conversation, when people would ask, "Why don't you just go build something?" So that's not accurate?
That's not accurate.
Yeah, we, and I think, yeah, I don't know where that might have come from. I think it's more about timing and getting things done, as opposed to what's eligible to build, because, and, and to your point, I mean, everything we've talked about is for buying properties and renovating them, but I think it's just a matter of the timing of getting those dollars spent.
And I mean, as many rundown hotels and motels we have on Main, I would much rather use something and make it better than to build something new. So I'm fine with it, I just had that wrong understanding in my head. And, oh, I have one other question. So where, where can Level 2 and 3 sex offenders stay?
Hmm.
I'm just curious.
We'll have to get back to you, I guess.
Maybe I'm not supposed to, you know, care about those evil sex offenders, but I'm just wondering where they are, where, where can they go if they can't go here?
Well, let's, we'll see what we can find out.
Okay. I think that was all my questions. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. Sorry I'm not being there. I really enjoyed this conversation, and let me toggle back to some of my questions here. So, so first of all, you know, I'd like to thank Mr. Hughes and his team and everything that they're doing, and the city staff regarding this shelter, because I feel this is the perfect location for a shelter and even making improvements. But I want to be clear, this is not in the city or District 1, this is in a county area. And even with that said, we have been supporting this A New Leaf organization for decades. I know the church I belong to has given service and food to many recipients there for decades. And we're, obviously, fire has gone there on medical calls, and as well as we are not policing this area, so being a county area, what my concern is, is how policing will be done to the area. Obviously, it's Miracopa County Sheriff's, because typically, a Mesa police officer will not respond to the area unless I'm not aware if they are. Maybe that question can be answered. Originally, the request was for 8 million, and now 9.5, and I know Natalie, you've done a really good job explaining that, and we've had some candid conversations on it. What I'm really concerned about is the contractual agreements with A New Leaf, and making sure that they are monitored, and how is that going to be done to make sure that we're receiving the amount of beds that we are going to be supporting and paying for?
Mr. Hughes, welcome.
Nice to be here.
Mr. Hughes, thank you.
Thank you. The, one of the things that's actually very ideal about this property is right next to us, right next door is a sheriff's substation. So that is an ideal situation for the safety in terms of the security and a police setting. So that is, I mean, that is basically between here and that wall, just right across the street is a substation. So we feel that that is an ideal situation. The other point you raise, we have always worked side by side with the city. And we will make sure, we will give all of the information necessary. We realize that this is a very strong, heavy financial commitment the city is making. And we will adhere to all of the specifics in the population that you would like to have placed there.
Very good. Thank you, sir. My, one of my other questions is since this is in the county, why has not the county been able to put some monies in towards this project? And what I, excuse me, what is the overall cost of the project as you move forward? Is there a dollar amount that, I know our part is potentially nine and a half million, but I don't know, can you build 30 units for nine and a half million dollars and do all the other improvements?
I'm not sure the, the question again. Well, let me, I think, okay.
Councilman Freeman, are you, your question is about...
Annual operations?
This, this specific project that we presented to you, which includes the additional studios, the additional building, the all, and what we've gone from eight to nine and a half million was after the conversation with council about doing the additional fencing, about changing, improving the facade, which is a dramatic change of the facade on the front end. So we've had to price that out and just inflationary costs is on that eight million have been pushing it up too. So I think, hopefully that answers that part of the question. I'm not sure.
Then I asked about the county participation.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So for us, it's, it's really more of an accounting thing because the county has provided four million dollars to the city of Mesa for these, this work. And we have decided to apply that just to the hotel purchase because it's more efficient and we don't have as much follow-up accounting, but also reporting to the county. Once we buy it, we report it and we're finished with that. And that's really good for our staff and better for our staff. But when the county provided this, their idea was to participate in both of these programs. So in essence, when you look at the bucket of dollars that we have for these types of uses, the county is participating.
So what I think Natalie's doing is taking the four million, applying it against the hotel, and then the dollars we had budget for the hotel, then can move over here. So it's just, we're just, and she's right, from a, how we have to report the dollars out is just easier to have it in larger chunks and be able to report it out that way as opposed to trying to spread it out between multiple projects.
Very good. Is there an overall cost of the project?
That's the nine and a half.
That's the nine point five.
Nine and a half. That's the nine and a half.
So that builds the 30 units and does all the facade and fencing work?
Yes.
And I think it's important to note, Councilmember Freeman, that it also adds a 3,000 square foot center building that will, counseling, workforce development, many of the things we need to have there because the space has been so limited. This is a very important addition that we will be able to provide better services.
Yeah.
And Mike, that's really important because council, it's, again, we talked about the studios, the improvements to the existing facility. But one of the things, the biggest complaints, what, one of the complaints were all these, the individuals that are there are kind of walking off campus. And so when we talked to New Leaf, we talked about how can we address that? And one of those ideas was to provide more of the services that could be there on the campus. And so providing, right now, the facility you have is very small, very limited. So the idea of building this other, what are we calling this?
Community's service center?
Community center or not, or, so we can have more services, workforce services, variety of services, so we can keep individuals on the campus receiving those services as opposed to having to go off campus.
And, and to add to that, the other thing that this agreement includes are a couple of vans, passenger vans, so that it helps a New Leaf staff take people off campus to other existing services and bring them back.
I think the other thing that's important, Councilmember Goforth, that you would have asked earlier, this is all for the services for the people that are living there. This is not, this is not for people who can just show up and have day services or, it's nothing like the Human Services Campus where there's 15 other agencies providing all kinds of things. What it becomes is a magnet. We are specifically staying away from that. We feel, while we could have actually added more beds than the 30, we felt that the capacity was a very important question that the city of Mesa has always asked. And they did not want 3, 4, 500 people. So this, this we feel is a manageable number that we will be able to provide the services for the people specifically that will be living there.
Actually, that, I was going to ask a question about this because Natalie, you and I have had a conversation about having onsite services and, and that that is not really the optimal way to, and is it when there's...
For the model of the Off the Streets program, we are doing that very differently. This is a little bit of a different model. And, but the idea being that they've shifted from keeping everybody on campus and adding some types of services is, we feel a good thing in this instance.
So do you not offer any services onsite now?
Yes, Steve.
Yes, we do. But with, we have really struggled and quite candidly, because of the shift that we have made now where all people will remain on campus, we have very limited space. It's basically been a shelter where they can just sleep. And we have some offices, but, but we need to really expand the, the counseling effort, the workforce development effort, the housing effort to get these people ready to move, to leave the center and move into other opportunities.
And along those lines, how long can they stay in the new studios?
We believe that it's going to be somewhere between four, five months to 10 or 11 months. But one of the conditions is that they will be employed. This is not going to be just a, a situation where it's, it's expanding the number of beds at the emergency shelter. No, this is one thing that's very unique about the city of Mesa, that you are actually graduating, so to speak, a step level system where these men have done well in the emergency shelter, haven't been able to find housing, but they're behaving, they're following the rules, they're employed. Those are the people who would be in, in the studio apartments.
So that was my other question is if they're in the emergency shelter and they have a job, they obviously can leave to go to a job.
Yes.
But would they, are they being bused or to the van to go to their job or whatever?
Some of, very few, but some have automobiles.
Okay.
We have transportation, bus passes. So we do everything in our quote, case management delivery system to help these individuals.
Okay. I assumed that by saying you wanted to keep them onsite, you didn't mean people who had jobs. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Remote workers.
Yeah.
They could be on the city council.
Council mayor.
Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for your comments. And I do support the location for this shelter. And I think it's important to note that reaching out to those that are having difficulties in their lives. And, and as Mr. Hughes and I have discussed, I, I drive by there probably two to four times a day just because that's the route that I take to get to Country Club. However, cleaning up this facility and making it look like a, and I would say a New Leaf project is one of our objectives here. And I support the city's participation in it. Natalie, just, again, I just want to ask one question. Talk about bridge housing. Is this the same as transitional housing? Just change the word.
So yes, Councilmember Freeman, in the industry, they refer to it as, as either transitional housing or bridge housing. We've chosen the word bridge. We feel like it's more descriptive. But also transitional housing in that term can be misunderstood by, by the public. And so we felt like this was a better term.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Hughes. How many beds are currently at the facility for use?
116.
116. And we will possibly obtain 50% of those? Is that right, Natalie?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
Over the course of a year, because we know it'll ebb and flow over the year.
Yeah.
But at the end of the year, we will have had at least that value to Mesa.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, Natalie. I look forward for this project moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Natalie, did you finish your presentation?
I did.
Okay. Counsel, any other, other questions on this item? I'll just note that I think it was, I don't know how many years ago it was, Natalie, that you helped us draft our homeless pathways to recovery. And we were very proud that we had, look, here's our wonderful homeless strategic plan. And it is wonderful. And it is, is very progressive and it shows people moving from one step to another. And I think we're all very proud of that. The problem is some of the boxes on that plan don't exist. And, and this is like bridge housing. So it's great to have a plan, but not if you don't execute it. Plans aren't made to be put on shelves. So I'm, I'm excited to see us move forward in, in this area. I, Mike and New Leaf, I want to tell you how much we appreciate you, the, the way you've been so responsive to our concerns and our critiques and our questions about how, how we can work together better has been very collaborative and cooperative. And, and thank you for being a great partner with the city of Mesa.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Brady, anything else?
Yeah, wait, not on this item, no. Was it, we're ready for F and G, five, sorry, five item, five F and G.
Five F and G. Thank you to our folks from MAG. We hope that you guys were not wearing out your patience here. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Wimmer. I'm the city treasurer. I'm here to talk about the city's 2023 financing plan. And there's a number of staff here in the room to answer questions. I also want to mention the city's financial advisor, Janelle Gold, is here from Hilltop Securities. And the city's bond counsel, who's, his name's Zach Sakis with the firm Greenberg Trowrigg, is on, joining us by Zoom if we have any, any legal, specific legal questions for him. So first of all, financing plan, what is it? It's, it's just basically to borrow money to pay for infrastructure. And why, why are we going to do it? Well, really it's to increase the water portfolio. And that's been an important issue highlighted lately. Also to support public safety and improve quality of life through libraries, parks, streets and, and other utilities. And there's an aspect of fairness to it in that the infrastructure, when it's financed, it gets paid for while it's being used and by those who are using it. The, the city's finance team, each, constantly really, we're, we're evaluating when and how to issue new debt and when to refinance or it's, it's called refund, existing debt is the, is the term that's used. But basically refinancing existing debt and, and then using cash to pay off existing debt early if we can. And we always make payments when due. And the process for financing is pretty simple. We, we borrow money from the financial markets and then we use that money to build projects. And then lastly, we pay investors back over time. The debt service on the debt is, means the principal, which is the amount borrowed and then interest that's paid to investors. And we, we borrow money for up to 25, 25 year final maturity. And we always make sure that, you know, we're, we're paying, we're paying some of it off usually every year with each issuance. And at least 20% of the principal is repaid in the first 10 years for shorter life projects. So like a fire apparatus or the advanced metering infrastructure project, those are assets that don't have a 25 year useful life. And so we make sure at least the cost of those projects is paid back in a, in a shorter timeframe. We could separate those out as separate financings, but it would, it would just be more expensive. And so we, for cost, we just wrap all the projects into one, into, into groups of, into the financing. So in municipal securities, there's a 10 year refinance call. And basically that means we can't refinance our debt for 10 years. It's not like a home mortgage where you can just refinance when you want. You can, you can't, you can't refinance it until 10 years has passed. And when we structure the debt, we make sure the, the payments are stable from year to year. So we don't have jumps and dips from year to year. And all, all of, the, all the city's forecasts include the assumption that we'll be issuing future, we'll be issuing debt either yearly or, or nearly yearly in the future. So the types of debt, you'll hear the words bonds and obligations. And simply put, they're just loans that can be bought and sold by investors. So we're going to talk about general obligation bonds, which are voter approved for a specific purpose, parks, public safety, et cetera. And they are backed by the full faith and credit of the city, which means we'll use all or, all and any resources we have to make those payments. But in essence, it's, it's understood to mean property tax because that's the one tax the council can set at whatever level you, you choose. There's not a, there's not, there's no sort of limit to, to, to prevent you from levying the property tax that's needed. And the general obligation bonds are paid for with the secondary property tax by, by the city of Mesa. Utility systems revenue obligations, that's the other type of debt we're going to, we're planning to issue and we'll talk about. That's a contractual obligation. It's backed by utility, a utility revenue pledge. So we, as collateral or as a pledge, we pledge our revenues. And it's, it's paid for with utility revenue. On the right, you see a picture of an old city of Mesa bond. It's kind of interesting. If you want to see that, it's hanging in Mike Kennington's office. But it's pretty, pretty interesting. You see the coupon, little coupons up at the top you rip off and, and send in to get your interest payment. So for this year, this issuance, we're talking about general obligation bonds of, for, this is library, parks and culture, public safety and transportation. We're targeting an $89 million of proceeds, which you'll see on the agenda, it's the resolutions not to exceed 90 million. And that's really just a little bit of cushion for flexibility and the structure and just how things come out. So you'll see these not to exceed amounts is what you'll be approving. But on the utility side, we're issuing, planning to issue and receive proceeds of 202 million with a not to exceed amount of 205 million. And these are noteworthy because they're the largest geo, general obligation utility issuances ever for the city, respectively. And really, the main reason is that first bullet, it's, it's really two years worth of funding that we're issuing for this year, 2023, and for next year, 2024, instead of one year. We, we usually do one year at a time, but we're doing, we're doing two years this time. And that's really because we don't have any refinancings because interest rates are so high. And so to save on issuance costs, we're, we're, we're going to issue two years worth at once. And the reason they're, also they're so large, relatively large, is because of, you're aware of the large water projects we're undertaking and the multiple general obligation bond packages that have passed the last six years, five, six years. And then the inflation that we're, we're experiencing the prices of, of projects. And you can see on the right there, it shows you the relative size of these new issuances, how much is being issued for each purpose. You know, water and wastewater are huge, parks a lot. And then it goes down a little bit from there. But a lot of natural gas and public safety, a little bit of streets, library and electric.
Ryan, I think we have a question for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Haradia.
Ryan, you mentioned as far as refinancing, is that a practice we do every year or is it every so many years?
Yeah. Mayor Vice Mayor Haradia, we, we look at refinancing every year. Since we tend, we've typically issued every year and there's that 10 year call, there's that 10 year, it's called a lockout period where you can't refi, refinance. Typically, every 10, you know, 10 years, so every year from 10 years ago, the bonds are becoming refinancable, right? You can refinance them. So typically, we're doing it every year. We, we used to do it every year until interest rates have risen recently. And now interest rates are higher than what we're paying on the existing debt. So there's no, there's no savings. In fact, there's negative savings because if we refinance, it'd be a higher cost. But yeah, we look at it all the time. As soon as the bonds become callable, as soon as we can refinance them. So the purpose for all this is, is to build stuff, right? And so you see some, some examples of... And so you see some examples of general obligation projects. Top left is a police evidence facility, top right's the Lehigh Sports Complex, and then a general, some road somewhere, the historic post office, and the Northeast Public Safety Facility. On the utility side, advanced metering infrastructure, that's a big project, the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, it's a big pipe going into that project. And on the bottom left, you see the Public Safety Campus Microgrid, that's electric, and the bottom right's a natural gas gate station, I believe. So looking at the debt service on the, for the general obligation debt, this is what our payments look like going forward. And if you look at the blue bar, that's the existing debt that we have due from prior debt issuances. And what we're proposing is the orange, the two-thousand-and-twenty-three sale. You can see it, how it's structured in there. The first two years are a little higher on the new debt, because we have some reserves from conservative estimates of collections. And so we're paying a little extra principal in those first two years. But you can see that nice downward slope. That's what you want in a debt service structure. And you can see the final maturity in our general obligation bonds is nineteen and a half years. We target twenty years, but we're halfway through the year, so it's nineteen and a half years when the final payment would be made. For the utility debt, same thing, blue is an existing debt, the two-thousand-and-twenty-three is the orange. And it's a twenty-four-and-a-half-year final maturity, so that'd be a little longer, a little longer final maturity. But this, these assets, you know, last, most of them, much longer than that. You can see the first part of the curve is kind of flat, and we're trying to change that. So and you can see the back part of the payments are more of a downward sloping curve, and that's what we, that's what we want. Because as you, you want a downward slope, because as you issue each new time, you want to be, you want to be building on a falling base instead of a flat base. Yeah. This is a totally different look at something. So this is all the city's debt. And instead of looking at existing versus new, it's looking at principal payments versus interest payments. So you can see the green is the principal, that's the amount we've borrowed. And the gold is the interest, or the amount of what we're paying investors for having loaned us the money. And you can see there is a general overall downward slope, which is, which is good. The first year, twenty-three, twenty-four, so this year, we'll be paying off a principal of more than a hundred million dollars. And it represents, that represents, it's a hundred and two million dollars, it represents fifty-eight percent of that payment. If you go out ten years, the fiscal year thirty-three, thirty-four, the percentage rises to seventy percent of the payment as principal. So as you, as you move through time, your interest payments reduce, and your principal payments become a bigger part of the payment. So Vice Mayor Haradia asked about refinancing or refundings. And the city's policy is that we'll refinance or refund debt when we can, and the savings exceeds three percent of the bonds being refunded. Right now, as I mentioned, there's no opportunities for refundings, because interest rates are higher than the existing debt. So when rates come down, we should have quite a bit to refinance. And just a note that over the last five years, the actual savings the city's achieved, and this is on a present value basis, so it's discounted a lower number than the nominal value, the actual dollars, is sixty million. And that's, so we got a few years of just massive savings, mostly to the utility debt. So the timeline for this is that on Monday, you'll consider authorizing the general obligation and utility bonds and obligations. And then in the first week of November or the second week, we would sell those, we would go to market competitively. And banks or underwriters would bid on their, basically, the lowest cost or the highest cost. They would, they would pay highest cost to them, lowest cost to us. And then December seventh, we would receive the proceeds.
So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Ryan. Thank you very much for that. Mayor, I just wanted to make this point here. Because it, we start talking about financing and debt and capital. It creates all kinds of different debates and emotions out in the community. And obviously, we try to be very prudent and conservative in how we issue the debt. We try to manage that debt in a way that really meets best practices. A lot of debt we're paying off today that we see is not because of decisions this council's made, it's because of councils that have been ten years. And, you know, it's only been since two thousand and eight that we have the secondary property tax, two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and ten.
Ten, sorry, it was some time ago. But what I want to make sure that we don't lose in that conversation is that we have a much better community because of it. We have fire stations, we have infrastructure that has brought all of the, you know, major employers to the city. They are here because of water and wastewater systems, expanding water treatment plants. And you all have the opportunity now to make generational decisions that councils, ten, fifteen years from now, are going to be paying that debt. But we're putting in pipelines that are going to provide for water security for the city for many, many years. We're building fire stations, we're building parks, we've got in here the, a lot of public safety, the evidence building. So these are investments that while, yes, the debt is there, and we're trying to be prudent, and we have the capacity to make these payments. If we were to show you our property tax, you know, where we are versus the value of what we use, we have tremendous, we have lots of capacity to continue to pay off our secondary property tax. We try to manage the debt within the utility rates. But at the same time, we want to invest in this infrastructure, because that's where it really returns. It's not just in the payment of principal and interest, it's how this infrastructure improves the lives of residents in Mesa. Whether it's securing their water resources, whether it's providing for a safer, safer community with police and fire services, or great amenities like great parks that you see in here. So I just, sometimes we lose track of like, you know, we just get into the numbers and the debt and the principal, but we don't think about, well, what, why did we do this? And I would say that since we've been able to do this, Mesa has a tremendous benefit, better streets, better infrastructure, and we've all benefited from that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan. So these are the bonds we're talking about that will go for voter approval next year?
No, these are ones that already, so what happened, the step of the process?
That's what I got confused on.
No, that's good, good question. So the process would be, you know, we've gone, we've come to council during a variety of times for deciding what bond we would take to a bond election. And the last one was twenty?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, right? And we went through a whole process, identified the list of projects, went to the voters, they approved it. Now, all we have, when, once the voters approve it, is kind of their approval, their authorization to issue the debt. Now, what we always have to remind councils is even after we come out, and we're going to do this in January, February of next year, we're going to come up with possible future bond programs. But we always come with a package that's fairly large, but it's also intended to be spread out over five years. And so each year, approximately, then we come to council and say, okay, we have this big program that was authorized by the voters for all of these public, public safety projects, or street, or street bonds. So now we say, okay, each year, as we look at the construction and development of those projects, what does it take to make the payments for the contracts, the construction of those projects? And that's, Ryan then works with engineering, trying to get a sense of how much money he's going to need to keep making the payments for the development of these projects. And that's what you're seeing today. Now we're selling the bonds that were authorized by the voters. We'll do that every year, and about every five years, for, and it ends up being a little more than five years, or more often, because we'll bring, maybe we'll bring public safety and streets one year, and then two years later, we may bring parks and libraries. So, I don't know, Ryan, I think that, so that's, we're only in the stage today is you are going, giving Ryan and the financial team behind him the authorization to go into the market over the next thirty, two weeks, thirty days?
Yeah, so it'd be the second week of November.
Second week of November. So you're authorizing him to go into the market and try to, you know, get the best price that we can to sell these now to investors who will buy the bonds and give us the resources to build these projects.
And that's why some of the projects have been completed, and some are in working order, and some haven't started or whatever, right? Yes, okay.
Yeah, maybe I could comment on that, Mayor Councilmember Spillsbury. We, you can either sell the bonds before you do the projects, or some jurisdictions wait until they finish the projects and kind of loan themselves the money internally, and then they issue them after they're done with the projects. We go in the middle, so we reimburse some of the, we go negative and loan ourselves some money, and then we also go into the positive after we issue. So we, some of these projects are done, and they were spent. So if you look at our, like, our financials right now in the, in the bond funds and these capital funds, they're negative, because we've done it on purpose. And we do that so we don't have to pay interest on the bonds. And the IRS lets us kind of go negative for a while and then go positive. So we're kind of in the middle compared to other jurisdictions who do it, some do it before, some do it after, we do it in the middle.
Okay. And that makes, I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking about. So and then how specific are we with the projects? Like, for the bonds that we decided to do for next year, are we very specific on, like, which types of things we're doing, or just which category they fall under? Like, when you look at the bar graph?
Right.
It says like categories, but do we get more specific than that?
So each year, when we go into, if we were, and we'll bring this during a budget discussion, we'll bring the capital improvement program. And that will have the projects, and it'll show, some projects will take two or three years.
Okay.
And it has an allocation of the budget dollar for each of those years. So that's kind of, we use that as a beginning of the discussion. Then we kind of refine that and making sure that we're keeping up, because some, a lot of projects will get delayed or pushed back, or they'll get more expensive. So, but that's what drives kind of this conversation, because even on the utility side, listen, the utilities could go spend lots of money really fast on capital projects, this is demand. But we have to work with them on saying, really, we have to manage that well, so we can manage, you know, also not impact rates too much at the same time. Other times, we have street projects, and Jim brought this up too. A lot of times, we'll issue the debt for these street projects, but it helps leverage the federal, or the federal and regional dollars that we're also drawing down by complete, we have to complete the project before we can get the reimbursement, I believe, on the MAG dollars. Is that right?
Yeah.
But so the voters that approved these bonds back in whatever year, they knew essentially which projects they were?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah. And you'll, we'll go through that again next year, and we'll come back. And we've already have some projects that we've just talked about as council. We'll bring those in the categories. You're right, we have an election that'll be just like public safety, and it'll list the fire stations and the police substations or the evidence. And then we might have a category for library and museums. Thank you, I knew you were going to say that. And museums, and that'll certainly be, and so inside of that, we'll also list the projects each time.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Summers?
See if I have any questions, or if these are just going to be possibly some more comments that we can talk about when we start talking about budget. But currently, the constitutional limit, there's a constitutional limit on how much GO debt we can have as a, as a community. And we're approaching, we're just shy of twenty-nine percent, I believe. How is that constitutional limit set?
So Mayor Councilmember Summers, the constitution has a twenty-six percent, there's a twenty percent limit, and there's a six percent limit. It's on the full cash value of the city's property. So if you take all the.
Taxable property you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And at twenty-nine percent, and what's considered, from a bond issuer's perspective, what's considered a healthy percentage? We're at twenty-nine, right? Or Mr. Brady can answer if you know.
Yeah, let me.
Yeah, I mean, but, oh, yeah, do you have that backup slide?
It's right here. Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Summers, this is, this comes from a state report. This is the general obligation debt limit. Like I said, it's twenty-six percent of.
Of the total capacity?
Of the city's property value, of the full cash value.
Right, so we're well below it.
Yeah, so we're at like.
But what's considered a healthy?
Well, there's, I think that's what other cities are doing, so we're kind of in the middle, it looks like.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Summers, it's, it's a little subjective, like, when values crashed back in the eight, oh, eight, oh, nine, Tempe wasn't over a hundred percent. And they're very healthy, so they have a triple-A bond rating. Other cities, it just, it just, it really just depends. But I think this is an old number, we're actually down in the teens now for this year. This is just the last year of the report. But because our property values have gone up so much, we're in a very healthy position.
Okay. And that's what I was interested in, is the percentage, what makes us a healthy community? We don't want to be overly burdensome on the people's ability to pay that tax.
Right, but there are cities that are above us, Gilbert, Tempe, that on an overall, you know, standard and porous moody's, they're probably ahead of us in those ratings. So it doesn't affect, from the financial ratings, it doesn't seem to affect it dramatically, because they're significantly higher than we are. But yeah, they will have a better financial position.
And you mentioned to, because we've got to keep this at a balance. And you mentioned that what we try to do is every ten years, when the bonds are callable, that we'll look to flatten out some of those peaks that come out by refinancing the bonds. Mr. Brady's been doing a good job of that. Have we looked at using reserves to pay off some of that debt since the bond prices are so high and we can't refinance?
We're doing that today, right?
We're going to pay off some?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Summers, so we do look at, when we have cash available, at paying off, defusing the bonds that we can. Now, now is probably the, since interest rates are high and our debt is relatively low compared to the market, it's probably not in our best interest right now to pay off existing debt. But we do look at that whenever the opportunity comes up.
I understand you're, if we have, say, we, construction sales tax, right? We've had quite a significant amount of that. So what we've used that cash for is to cover overruns, due to construction inflation overruns. And we've also taken on projects on a cash basis. So for example, City Hall, thirty-plus million-dollar project, most cities would go and issue debt for that, we're going to pay cash for it. So we're trying to find, it's not just paying off debt, but it's also paying for cash for projects that are in front of us now.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear. That's really good. I mean, my wife and I bought a car recently, and it was, do you take out a six percent loan? Or if you had that money in the bank, which is earning nothing, can we use that instead? And that's a cost savings, and that's essentially what we did, is we bought the car using cash. And so it's better than borrowing money unnecessarily and then paying a higher rate. So I'm really happy to hear that from the city manager. All right, thank you so much.
I think I, just going back to Chris's point on just the growth that we had, have had, and hopefully continue to have, how that has helped our secondary property tax along with the actual savings that you had there, that's sixty million, right? As far as looking at ways of how we refinance, and how do we deal with the growth of our community, right? Going back to that growing piece. And so I think in the last several years, hasn't our secondary property tax actually been lower?
The rate.
The rate, right, it has been based on these savings, based on the growth and other.
Based on managing the debt, but also just because of a healthy property tax base.
For sure, yeah. So just going back to, I think, I want to make sure that, based on the work that we have as far as setting up a community that people want to live and work here and, you know, do business here, I think this is something that we've done a good job in, always looking at ways and how we can look at the taxpayer and figure out ways on how to provide these amenities, but also working on the budget pieces, right? As we see here, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman or Ms. Dobbs?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Or a comment.
Go ahead.
No, that's fine. It's easy to forget about us. We're out here somewhere. Hey, and Ryan, thank you for addressing on Slide Five. I had a concern or a question about buying, you know, our advanced metering infrastructure. They typically, our meters and things last about fifty. They typically, our meters and things last about 15 years, but we're using 25-year bonds potentially to pay for that. Can you just readdress that? How we're paying off that debt or moving principal to pay off the debt for those type of projects? Because, you know, when you buy a 25-year bond, they will probably go out of service before that's done. And then maybe our bond market representative can talk about how the bond market is doing and the rates that are usually going to be charged potentially in November when they go out to sale? Thanks.
Mayor Councilmember Freeman, sure. Yeah, so on the, both on the, both kind of projects, we, we, when we issue new debt, we say a 25-year final maturity, but each year we're paying a principal back. And so, we make sure that the cost, like, with AMI, I think they, the budget this, for this period is about, I asked them, they said 40 million was the budget, which, that's kind of the max. And we'll be paying more than that in the first 10 years of, of this utility debt issuance. And so, we pay, we pay some of this principal back each year, and that should cover these shorter-term, shorter-life projects. So we feel comfortable that we're matching, because it's, it's really a principle. You want to match up your, you don't want to be paying for something after it's no longer in use, right? So-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we make sure with the apparatus and the AMI that we're, we're paying at least that amount off over that time period. We, we could, we talked about separating these out in their own transactions, and it just adds extra costs. We just have them wrapped together with all the longer-term projects. But it really, we really are paying them back prior, or at least before they're, before they're going to come out of service.
Do we typically take that principal and put it in some type of interest-bearing account? Or, you know, so that it earns a little bit of money? I forget some of the strategies that we do.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yeah, I, I invest the city's money. I, so as soon as we get these bond proceeds, I can't, I can't wait to buy a whole bunch of investments because interest rates are so high right now. Yeah, well, it's really a short, there's just short-term investments because just as we spend the money down over the next year, year and a half. But, yeah, we'll, we'll earn five, you know, four or five, depending on where the market is when, when we get the bonds, but that's what we would earn right now.
I wrote that down, Ryan. But let's be clear, Ryan is not a long-term, he doesn't very oft, very, not very often does he go long.
Right.
Right, so we're, the purpose of buying these bonds is to pay for projects now, right? So this is not intended, we're hoping we can, you know, get it right and be very conservative to minimize amount of debt. We try not to carry too much beyond what's needed. Now, over time, because of rates, projects, and things have done well as far as collections, we've, we've accumulated a balance, and we have to be careful with that, too, because we don't want to have a reserve too significant because we need to use that to pay down debt. So, we try to be, manage that carefully, right, Ryan?
Right, um, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, Chris, it's, yeah, it's just like your home finances. You have to have some money in the bank, and you might have a mortgage. You know, you have diff, you have debt, but you also have reserves to cover, you know, what's going on in, in day-to-day operations. So, that's how we, that's how we have it structured.
Thank you.
Janelle, would you like to talk about the bond market?
Mayor, Councilmembers, this is Janelle Gold with Hilltop Securities, and I act as the city's financial advisor. I'd just like to address kind of where the market is currently. So, recently, we have seen a run-up of our kind of market index for municipal bonds that has gone up about 50 basis points, so that's 0.5% over the last six months. So we definitely have seen pressures upwards on rates, and that's kind of also why you see the refinancing opportunities more limited. However, overall, the borrowing rates that are available are kind of near historic averages and norms if you look at the longer term. So even though it is definitely higher than we've had in the last five to seven years, that was remarkably because we had a period of very lower-than-average interest rates. So it is kind of returning to current longer historic nor, norms. The other thing I'd mention is normally, bad news in the world actually is good news for municipal bonds when you're trying to sell. People kind of flee to safety, so kind of recent large headlines have kind of dropped that kind of index by about 12 basis points, just in the last day or two, with some of those, like, national geopolitical headlines. It's kind of thought that that might be a temporary decrease, maybe a week, maybe two. So we may or may not be able to take advantage of that. But we definitely try to time it, talk to professionals who kind of buy and sell, and then we will go out to competitive sell to try to make sure that we have, you know, a large pool of investors, banks, bid on this and kind of get every single point that you can to get the very lowest borrowing possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, is our, does that answer your questions?
It does, it gives a great snapshot. So, I guess the investors out there are looking for municipal bonds, is what you're telling us? And that, you know, the interest rate is probably considered there as well as the basis points are a little bit lower, which is what we pay, correct? That is, we pay on the basis points in obtaining those monies.
Mayor.
Okay, that answers my question, and thank you.
Thank you. Before we leave, Ms. Duff, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, thank you. So, I hate, I know we're going into the, in quite a lot of depth, and we're not even in budget season, but we all realize that, you know, the inflation, the interest rates have increased dramatically since the voters have authorized some of these bonds. So how do we handle the cost overrides and the higher interest rates than we anticipated when they were issued?
Mayor Councilmember Duff, you're, you're right. When these were approved, on the general obligation side, interest rates were lower. You know, we, on the general obligation side, it affects the property tax levy, so the higher interest costs mean a slightly higher levy. On the utility side, this, well, I know there's been some adjustments to the planned projects.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you recall, we made the presentation on the utility fund, on the rates. We talked about, there were some projects we actually dropped off the capital program because we, the price has gone up so much that we've had to eliminate some projects out of the current five-year program. If you recall, in last year's budget, we set aside $15 million or so to mitigate or to help cover the cost of some of these projects that are on, that are overruns. So we've had to manage, some projects have just gotten deferred, some projects are not going to happen. But other projects, because the inflation has also improved construction sales tax collections, it's improved some of the other revenues, we've used those revenues to kind of use as a gap funding for projects that were funded by bonds. But now because of inflation, they're much higher than we had originally anticipated, so we supplement that with some additional dollars. So, I'm trying to think of some examples we've brought to council where we've had to, I know we talked about the idea museum, we're using dollars for that. I think the, the post was another one. There's a couple others that we've had to use dollars for. And the library, yeah. So, luckily, while the interest rates have gone, or the inflation's moved project cost up, it's also, we, the, because of inflation, our construction sales tax has gone up at collection, so we've used some of that to help cover those costs.
Great, thanks for the explanation. I think it's important as residents that we really understand the system that we work. The city is very well managed, rated very high for our fiscal management, and I thank you for all your work, it's very difficult given this, the economic times, and just thanks.
Thank you, yeah, Ms. Go forth.
I just want to make a comment, state the obvious, that it's obviously a balance between building, as, as Mr. Brady said, building, staying a relevant and desirable community, and not holding too much debt that we strap future residents and councils, et cetera. I, I think that I would agree with Councilmember Duff's management, as well as this council has done a good job at balancing those, but it's a, it's a constant balance. And I just want to reiterate to the folks listening that that obviously is something that's prioritized and consistently evaluated, so, thank you.
Thank you. Before our financial advisor leaves us, I, when I woke up this morning on the newsfeed was an opinion from Janet Yellen that the war in Israel is not, she doesn't anticipate it's going to impact global financial markets substantially. But I, to me, it was just kind of a reminder that we live in very volatile times, and if it's not that catastrophe, in November, it might be five other things that do impact global financial markets. So, are, are we walking into, with this authorization on Monday, is this insane, thou shalt buy bonds? Or is it just authorizing you to say, hey, in the event that it's, it's still a prudent financial investment, we are going to proceed?
Yeah, and we have parameters, Mayor. We have, we have parameters on what the, what we've anticipated or estimated those will be. So obviously, if something goes really bad, actually, but Janelle said, if it goes really bad, it's actually helps us, unless it's happening to Mesa.
Because investors will flee towards safety, I think you said.
Yeah, so, but we, we're not hoping that, but that's, so, but yeah, we would come back to council if the, if the parameters we have on the, the high end of the rates that we're anticipating, if those get affected dramatically, we'd come back to council.
Yeah, Mayor, we, we, we don't have to, we're not tied to issuing at any certain point. We don't want to try to time the market because it's not possible, right? It could always be better, it could always be worse, you don't know, so you, you really want to. But if there is some sort of bad market where things freeze up, and there's, like, happened with the pandemic, that happened, we, actually, we were scheduled to sell then, and we, we just delayed.
We've done that once, where we, we passed.
Yeah, and we came back a couple months later, once, once market conditions had, had normalized, and then, and we sold. So we're not, we're not tied into any sort of schedule here, other than if, yeah, no. We're, we're, we're good to wait as long as we need to.
Great.
Sorry, I have one more question, and I think we've talked about this. The, the timing between the voter, the vote, the voter approve, approving the issuance, and the actual issuance. I know it's typically, you know, I think what I've heard you say is four to five years. The pandemic lengthened that to about six to seven, but the target is?
So let's just say it this way, so when we get an authorization, we think of that authorization, that we size that authorization, is like for a five-year program of projects.
Okay.
Okay? Now, we've got projects that were today presenting to you that were approved by voters two, three, four years ago. So there's just kind of like this, you know, train of projects that keep coming that might have been approved five years ago, that we're now just building and we're now financing. But we go through that, we, that's why we create a capital improvement program. We do, when you, and you're aware of that, thank you very much. So when you go through that, if you look at that, you'll see all those projects that are in the bond pro, that were in the bond program, and others that are being paid with just cash. And you'll see them scheduled out. You'll sometimes see, in the first three or four years, you'll see no expenditures. And then you'll see something showing up two or three years out. And that's just our way of trying to balance this whole program out over the, over the, all the time.
But it's just an, sort of an internal policy and process. There's no requirement that they have to be issued.
No, we try, well, we come to council with those list of, like, council, especially talking about the categories and the list of projects, and we get authorization to issue those bonds. Then we come back and talk about how they'll get scheduled out over the next four or five years, and then that affects what we're doing today.
Yeah, Mayor, and Councilmember, go forth. It's interesting because once voters authorize bonds, then it never expires. So we have voter authorization from like the 80s, and that, we never quite issued. But we try to issue a little bit, take, take a bite each year as we, as we need the money. We don't want to issue it too early. And, and if you want to see on the screen, there's the, this issuance for GEO, you can see we're issuing, using the 2018 authorization and the 2020 authorization. We haven't started the '22 authorization with public safety because we haven't finished the 2008 authorization for public safety. That doesn't mean those projects aren't going on, they are. We just always, it's like a first, first comes, first in, first out authorization. We issue the earliest authorizations first. But yeah, it does take a few years to get, get through them.
Thank you, Council, any other questions on this item? Thank you very much. Mr. Brady, and any other staff? Okay, we're about an hour and a half into this meeting, and we are going to now start the agenda for this meeting, but-
No, we haven't, we haven't finished the agenda for Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't talked, we haven't talked about council questions, thank you very much. Let's, thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. Let's talk about council questions for Monday's agenda. Go ahead, Ms. Spillsbury.
I don't know how there could still be questions after that. At 7:00 a.m., the drive-through ordinance. I just really am feeling strongly that we have the planning and zoning board for a reason. And it was a special meeting, it wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting, so two of the board members could not, could not even be there. Five board members that were there spent hours during their study session, and then quite a bit of time during the actual meeting, going over all of these details. And they asked to continue it, and they were told they could not continue it. And staff told them they were not going to make any changes. And then they did proceed to make some minor changes to it. And I'm not feeling comfortable with the fact that their recommendation for denial, which was a 5-0 denial, came to us, but that there were some changes made. So I am recommending that we send it back to planning and zoning so that they can see the same presentation that we have. I tried my best to pull up both of the presentations from last week and this week. I don't have the presentation that went to P&amp;Z. It gets down into the weeds, it's super complicated. I couldn't, I can't tell what changes we're making anymore and what we were going to make, and then staff decided to change, and then we decided not to. I'm, I'm confused by it all, so I'm, I'm not feeling comfortable moving forward with this vote. I know we've been doing this for almost two years. It's been incredible, all the work that's been done on it, done on it. And it's a much better ordinance than it was when it first came to us. And I appreciate all of the voices that went in to make that happen, but I'm still not feeling comfortable. I have no idea if I have council support to send it back to planning and zoning, but I want to make a recommendation to send it back to planning and zoning.
Mayor. Yes, Mr. Freeman, before you, you chime in, I think that's a, it is unusual for us to, to disregard the recommendations of planning and zoning. Those are, those people are on that board for a reason. They are, what we admire and respect their work, and this is an example of something that they worked very, very hard on. So I, I'm very sympathetic to what you just said. My, my question is, if we send it back to P&amp;Z, in what, how is it going to be different than what they have already commented on? And my understanding, Mary, if you could address this, is I think the only difference, because when, when they addressed this, the, the proposal was that we require traffic stacking studies in all cases, they rejected that. And so, when it came, one of the, I think, recommendations that staff brought when they, they brought it up to us is, well, you might want to take a look at that and not do it in all cases. I think the consensus of council after our last study session was, no, we like traffic stacking. But I, so I think the only change-
Traffic studies. We don't like traffic.
Thank you, we're not, we don't like traffic stacking. However, I think the only, correct me, the only difference, I think, between what we're voting on, on Monday, and what P&amp;Z passed on is the noise attenuation changes. Am I, how am I wrong or right there?
Mayor Giles, that's correct. The only modification from the ordinance that went to the planning and zoning board is related to the noise study and the, the option to do a noise study if you can't meet the 100-foot setback from residential uses or properties. And we've added the decibel levels of what that noise study needs to measure to, so that it's very clear, rather than just asking for a noise study without those decibel levels.
Okay, so if we send it back to, to P&amp;Z as is, the only comment that they could make, that would be, perhaps different to the comments that they've already made, is whether, how they feel pro or con about the noise attenuation changes.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Mr. Freeman, I, I heard you speak up.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to support Julie's motion for that. I, I even raised that question up last time at our study that it would be plausible for us to move it back to P&amp;Z and let them reevaluate the, the whole decision on the ordinance. And so that's where I'd like to move forward with, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, other comments on Ms. Spillsbury's suggestion that this go back to P&amp;Z?
Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Duff?
Just to clarify, I think there was a change, wasn't there, on the onsite circulation and stacking study? That when it came to us originally, it was only if it deviated for the standards that they had to do it, or something like that. I'm trying to look back on my notes. And now, per our last meeting, council felt like it needed to be on all cases. And then, that's number one. Number two, I have an issue with the number of council use permits, the CUPs, on so many different kinds of zoning. And I know we have the numbers and such, but here's the point. A CUP can be an arbitrary decision. We would have developers coming into the process without any idea of if they can be successful or not on the project, and they have invested a lot of money, and paid for the studies, and paid the $2,500 for the CUP, and then we're into an arbitrary decision. I think it's a high risk when we have so many different classifications. Neighborhood commercial, I absolutely agree, we need a CUP, planned, departmental, light industrial, general industrial, heavy industrial. That's a lot of CUP evaluations under a lot of different zoning that could go the wrong way, and I think it gives developers like a mystery as to the idea if they could be successful or not. I think we need to tighten that up, so there's a little bit more confidence for developers to know if their project, if they made, met all the requirements, would they be successful? And with a CUP, that's an unknown. I'd like a CUP on the heavy industrial, definitely neighborhood commercial, want to protect our neighborhoods, I think that's a huge intent, is being able to create neighborhood environments. So on the others, I could just leave it to staff to require that these zoning classifications, if they make the new standards, they meet all of the new standards, it goes to planning and zoning, but it does not require a CUP. Just want to bring that up as a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jen, maybe before Mary responds to that, could I just ask you this question? Do you think, the question that you're raising, I can see where that would impact whether you vote yes or no on this, on Monday, but do you think, how do you feel about, do you think that answer would be, would benefit from being, going back to P&amp;Z? Or have they really already, you know, addressed that?
And Mayor, before, I mean, I think we need to reset the question, because I think there's a lot of confusion about the CUP, and what, because there's, I think there's been some kind of, you know, that's great, create chaos on that, but this is actually a very simple process, because today, Mary, talk about what the process, that someone who has one of these other properties, zonings, what all they would have to do to preserve, avoid this CUP in the future.
So Mayor Giles, Council, Mr. Brady, the way that the ordinance is written, today, if you have an LI, a GI, or a PEP designation, you are permitted by right. If you have the NC or the HI, you need a special use permit, which would either go to the planning and zoning board, or it would go to the Board of Adjustments. The way that the ordinance is written, what would happen is, you would have three years to claim your rights to being permitted in the LI, the GI, or the HI, or to go through the SUP process for the neighborhood commercial, or the heavy industrial zoning districts.
So Mary, if you have a property with those designations today, you have three years to register that property, to retain the existing review process that's in place today?
That is correct.
Okay.
So...
Moving forward from the three years.
You'd need a CUP.
Well, after the three years...
No, after three years, if they don't, if they don't come in and make that register, then yes, it would default to what is being proposed by the council, by the ordinance.
That's correct.
All development done in three years, and continuing into the future. Needs a CUP.
So Mayor Giles, Councilmember Spillsbury, it's not all development, because any...
I'm talking about drive-throughs.
Any development, any property owner that wants to do a drive-through five years from now can claim that right today, and it continues. The right does not go away after three years. We'll target that property in our GAS system, so that it triggers, so that staff knows they don't have to go through the new process. They have three years to claim the right, but the right does not go away after three years. It stays with the land once that right is claimed on that property.
But five years from now, will every drive-through require a CUP? Or are there still some zoning classifications that, you know, that by right, they are entitled to drive-through?
Mayor Giles, that is correct. There will be other zoning districts where it will still be permitted by right, such as the LC.
And I think staff's looking at, looking backwards, had this law been, or this process been in place a year ago, that would have added five additional CUPs.
That is correct, Mayor Giles. We did that, that research of all of the cases that we've had, drive-throughs from June 2021 through January 2023, and it would have been an additional five CUPs. That's correct.
So I think this discussion is important, and we ought to have it, but I still want to also focus on the question of whether or not we ought to go back to P&amp;Z.
And nothing, this did not change. I just want to be clear, this did not change.
This is the same debate that happened at P&amp;Z, and we have the benefit of that discussion. So my question is, sending it back to P&amp;Z to have this discussion again, I don't know what the value of that is, unless there, if there's a new question to pose to planning and zoning, then I'm open to the idea of getting, I value their input, but I'm questioning if there is a new question to ask planning and zoning.
Well, I have some comments, but Jen didn't get to respond to your question.
I'm sorry, Jen. So please, please go ahead.
I, I'm good, thank you, Julie. I'm good to listen to a little bit more. I am on the fence on this. First of all, if we push it back to P&amp;Z, what kind of delay are we looking at? Number two, I'm still confused whether we change the onsite circulation stacking study from what P&amp;Z had.
No, what is in front of council is the same that was presented to P&amp;Z. What happened is, following the P&amp;Z meeting, you know, I think the staff, we were trying to do a good deed, we heard some input from community members about noise and about the traffic stacking, and so when we came to council, because P&amp;Z had outright rejected it without any amendments or any attempt to try to make it better, we on our own said, you know what, council, we learned some things. We would like to suggest an opportunity to make some changes on the stacking and the noise. What we heard from council was, they were not interested in making those changes on the stacking study, so we went back to what was originally proposed to P&amp;Z. So the only thing, Mary, clarify again, that is different than what P&amp;Z heard, and the changes we suggested to council, really was just clarification on this noise, getting, making sure the decimals were clearly articulated, the number, what it was, it wasn't arbitrary, so that's been established. But I think that's just a clarification of what we were presenting. Is that fair?
That's fair, that's correct.
So everything is the same?
So I, I guess my bigger issue there is that it was a special, it was not scheduled, so not everyone could be there, so we didn't get a full recommendation, we only got a recommendation from five. These are experts in their fields. It, I think it's very unfair to say that they didn't make any suggestions or recommendations, because they spent hours, I think the study session was almost three hours, it's not televised, so I couldn't watch it, but that's what I heard, that it was very long, very complex conversation. They had so many concerns and so many issues with this ordinance, and again, they are experts in their fields, that they didn't feel like they could list three things during the meeting to suggest, to suggest. They wanted to continue it, so they could keep talking, because they don't feel like this ordinance is where it needs to be. I think if we're going to have a plan and zoning board to make recommendations, we should probably listen to their recommendations. This wasn't a split vote. I, since I've been on council for almost three years, I've never, ever seen a unanimous vote for a recommendation for denial. I really, really value their expertise, their experience, and their opinion, and I feel like if we don't give them more time to look at this, and we just vote this through because of, I'll leave it to your imagination of why we're voting this through, then we're just thumbing our noses at them, basically, is how it feels. It doesn't feel good to me, as I talk to people out in the community and in other cities, this doesn't look good for the city of Mesa to have this denial, asking for a continuance, they get denied even option of continuing it. I don't know what we're in a hurry for. I can't quite figure out why we're in such a hurry to get this passed. We've been working on it for two years, so I don't understand why we can't go back and keep working on it, so that it's the ordinance that we can be proud of.
Thank you. Ms. go forth.
I did listen to the P&amp;Z study sessions. They're not video, but there is audio, and they did, I listened to August, this was brought in August and September, so it wasn't just September 20th, it was brought in August as well. And I feel like staff, they did have concerns. I listened to every single concern, and I feel like staff has addressed it. I would agree with the mayor. I'm not sure, if they had said that there, what specifically can be changed, and gave a suggestion, so that Mary and Rachel could respond, I think that would have been a lot more helpful than to just say, we have so many concerns, we don't, we don't have time for it. That, I'm a little bit baffled by that. I don't really understand how, how you can't specify a few. So I, I mean, it seems to me like they want to go back to the drawing board, which, again, back to what the mayor said, I'm, you know, we, this has gone through the process, what is, what parts do they have a problem with? What, and what are the suggestions? That's something we didn't hear, and that was, they had full opportunity to give us. I, I don't support sending it back once again. I think we've been through this process. I agree, it's unsettling to have a 5-0 denial, but it's also, it's not clear-cut as to why. It doesn't seem to me that, that there's anything we can, we can change and alleviate their concerns from. We've addressed them, it seems to me the staff has.
Counsel, is there any other discussion? I think I'm going to just ask for a vote on Ms. Spillsbury's request that it just go back, so we can then focus our discussion on the merits of the proposal as opposed to the process. Any, any discussion before we do that? Okay, all in favor of sending this back to planning and zoning, please say aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Duff, you voted aye, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in opposed, please say nay. Nay. So that motion fails, and this will proceed to our Monday agenda. Should we continue the discussion on the merits of this? Anything else you want to talk about?
I don't, I don't think there's a point in doing that. I just want to say that I will also be bringing up on Monday, when we have this discussion, that we, some of us felt like it should go back to planning and zoning because of the 5-0 denial, and that that was not, I'm just going to, I'm going to bring up this conversation, so that everyone knows that, that some of us are very strongly in favor of listening to our planning and zoning board and value their opinion.
Well, that I would vote aye for.
Yeah, right, no, I know. I just, so I just, I want them to feel that. I think they're kind of like, why are we here? Why, what's the point of the planning and zoning board? And I don't want them to feel that, because they're volunteers, they're spending a lot of their time to do this, and we're not listening to them, so, thank you.
Can I say thank you for making that motion and for pointing that out? I think the last thing we want, I, the fact that we spent a lot of time wrestling with our discomfort at moving forward with something that the P&amp;Z board did not recommend, I think hopefully they acknowledge, they take that as a compliment, that we are, their voices were very matured on this. All right, Counsel, any other questions for Monday's agenda? Mr. Summers?
Do you recommend a 5-minute break?
I'm going to accept that recommendation, but before that, is there anything else on Monday's agenda that we need to talk about?
All right, so we'll start with the MAG presentation when we come back.
Right, so we're going to, we're going to take a quick break, let's start back at 9:22, okay?
Mayor, Mayor Mark here. Yeah, I just had a question on 3E, is that going to follow as a denial? I just wanted to confirm that. Jared's coffee, I know that was a denial from staff, I just wanted to confirm that.
You know, Mark, people are already excited about leaving, so we'll come back and talk about 3, 3A, was it?
E.
3E. Okay, we'll talk about 3E. Was that a quick question?
The answer is, we're still recommending a denial.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, since we're chatting about this, I heard that he withdrew his application, so if we could check on that also.
Yeah, we're just trying to confirm that, Councilmember Duff, but until we get that confirmation, we'll leave it here, but otherwise, you're correct. If we, if we find out he's withdrawn it, it'll come off the agenda for Monday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll be back at 9:22. Thank you, we'll reconvene after our recess, and the next item on our agenda, item one is to review the agenda we have, oh, I'm sorry, we already did that. Item, no, that was so good, let's do it again, shall we? Item 2A is a presentation on housing and homelessness, including the off-the-streets and public safety response to homelessness. Lindsay, it's good to have you with us.
Good morning.
And Katie?
Good morning. I used to be a yoga teacher, so we could like...
Yes, we could use a session right now. We could turn off the lights and have a really good yoga session right now.
We can work on that, we can work on that. You can do it again, I believe in you. Okay, so we are here this morning to talk about housing and homelessness trends in the region, as well as impacts in Mesa, and programs that are related to our work around these issues in Mesa. So with me here today, I have Katie Gentry. She's with the Maricopa Association of Governments, and she's the Regional Homelessness Program Manager. I also have our Assistant Police Chief, Ed Wesing, here with me today, and he will be presenting some information as well. So without further ado, I don't think I introduce myself, Lindsay Belinky, Deputy Director of Community Services, and I oversee our Office of Homeless Solutions.
Thank you so much for having me. If you'll go on to the next slide. And so, a little bit, we're going to start with housing data and talking through housing data, and then move on to homelessness data, next slide. So a quick overview of my presentation, really talking about the state of housing, how we have a decreasing housing availability, which is really leading to an increase in rent, that supply and demand issue related, we then have an increasing in evictions, and now, as a result, we're seeing increasing homelessness across the region and here in Mesa. Next slide. So I want to start with, where are we at with housing supply, looking at residential completions from 2000 to 2022? Over the past 11 years, we've seen a dramatic reduction in completions, both single-family and multifamily, but population has continued to increase. So comparing 2000 to 2010 completions, we completed just over 390,000 units, while population grew about 725,000 people, that equals 1.86 people per unit. But comparing that to 2011 to 2022, we completed 250,000 units, while growing even more, 769,000 people, so that's 3.03 people per unit built. So we've seen a dramatic increase in people comparatively to units built, and we're not able to keep up with the growth in population that we've seen across the region and here in Mesa. Broken down even further, we've built more multifamily over the past 11 years, which is a really strong component, so these multifamily are part of those residential completions, but overall residential completions is still lower, and apartment builds have increased 10% since 2000, but we still are not building enough. So with that lower completion rate, next slide, and we've seen that population growth, we've continued to see that vacancy rate decline. We're at 5%, and even now in 2023, we're below that, at just below 4%. And a healthy vacancy rate is between 5 and 10%. That allows for move-ons, moving between units, and our population change, so continuing to allow people to move here, and at that, at this rate, we're just not there anymore. Next slide. Looking here, narrowing kind of down into Mesa, the trend of residential completions is pretty similar to the region. We've seen just over 30,000 units that were built from 2000 to 2010, with population growth being 30... growth being 38,000 people, so that would be 1.27 people per unit built. But from 2011 to 2022, there were 28,000 units built, with population growing 75,000 people, so that is 2.7 people per unit built, more than double than the decade prior. So something that's really important, we're doing better in Mesa than we're doing across the region, but we still aren't, aren't building fast enough comparatively to our population growth needed. If we go into multifamily, we're seeing a similar trend also to the regional trend. You'll hear me say that so many times. Mesa is kind of a microcosm of what we see across the region. In the past 11 years, with just, we've had just over 9,000 units built compared to prior in 2000 to 2010, 5,700 units built between 2000 and 2010. So we did hit that lull kind of after the 2008 recession, building virtually not at all, and now we've continued to see that raise happen since kind of 2016, 2017, but we're still not building fast enough comparatively to the people that are coming here, as one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. So as a result, we are continuing to see our rents increase. So across the region, if you look back on that far left, you'll see a lot of green and dark blue. Those are rents that are under $1,000. 93% were under $1,000, and now moving to that far right, that green is down to just 7% of the market. So we've seen continued increase over the last 12 years, and specifically over the last five years, of how much rent increases have happened. And if we go to the next slide, here in Mesa, we see a similar version, except even more substantial. 98% of rents were below $1,000 in 2010, and now just 5% are below $1,000. You'll also see more of that gray and light blue on the far right side, which will be rents above $1,500. So we're continuing to see, rents continue to increase, and the biggest impact that we're seeing is individuals who are on a fixed income are no longer able to afford a rent. Single-income households aren't able to afford that same rent that they did afford five and 10 years ago, respectively. I really like this map, because it highlights the change in rent that has happened across the region. You see the colors of dots across everywhere in the region. Anecdotally, I think everybody has heard, my rent raised $500 and I can't stay here, but the data also shows that. We've continued to see rents raise across the region. It's not just in one place all congregated where we had the lowest rents. We've continued to see rents increase and impact most of our communities across Maricopa County. While the rent has increased 38% since 2019, median income has only increased 28%, so our growth in rent has exceeded our growth in income across the region. Okay, so due to increasing rents, we saw lower availability and lower builds, and now we have higher rents, and now we're seeing more folks spending more money on their income. 30% of their income are house, 30% of households are cost burden, which means that they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. That's both rent and utility costs, or mortgage and utility costs. That equals about 548,000 households. If we take that a step further, to 156,000 are spending more than 50% of their income on housing, so that's about 13%, and that's what we call extremely cost burden across the region. So then we see evictions start to come into play. We've continued to see evictions rise, so that kind of color change from gray to blue is when COVID hit and we had a moratorium in place. We saw that dip happen, and in September of 2021 is when the moratorium expired. We're continuing to see evictions grow, and you see that kind of peak, we typically have a peak in the summer. And in 2023, projections are looking to be even higher than 2022 and prior. So we're back to pre-pandemic levels by projections, and in August of 2023, we saw over 7,700 evictions filed in Maricopa County, which is one of the highest rates of evictions that we've seen in Maricopa County even since the recession in 2008. In Mesa, you see a very similar trend, rising post-moratorium. 2023 projections show just like across the county, higher than 2022, although they are preliminary at this point, evictions are not finished until the end of the year, when we go back through and do a complete data analysis of the year. Most of our evictions are in lower-income areas, where there are more affordable rents. So unfortunately, when folks are evicted from that already lower-cost apartment, we're now having nowhere else for them to go to afford an attainable rental to move into because of all of the increasing rents across the region. So also want to say that those lower-income areas are across the entire region, they're not just clustered in one area, and so we see evictions really impacting kind of everybody across the region. So with that, with lower supply, increasing rents, we're seeing increased evictions, and I will move into homelessness data. So although, I'm going to start with point and time count, and then move into the homelessness trends report, which is a data point, data point that we use more consistently. Point and time count is a really central data point, but it is really an indicator of people experiencing homelessness. It's one time a year, in January. We have been doing it similarly for decades, but it is really limited in nature, because it is one time a year, and those last 10 days of January. In 2014, we had 1,053 people across the region experiencing unsheltered homelessness, so those are going to be folks who are staying outside, in a car, under a bridge, kind of in a place not meant for human habitation. In 2019, that number increased to 3,188. So we saw kind of a dramatic increase, and in 2023, on the next slide, that number increased even further to 4,908 across the region. Although that was less than 2022, we had 121 fewer people, we still increased our overall point in time count, because we've dramatically increased our shelter throughout the region over the last few years. Our total point in time count was still 9,642, which was above the previous year of 9,026. If we narrow down into Mesa, in 2014, we saw 55 people experiencing homelessness that were unsheltered, and in 2019, that number had increased to 206. But in 2023, as we continue to increase, to the next slide, Mesa counted 366 people unsheltered. So that was a deduction from 2022, but still almost seven times the number found in 2014. So we're continuing to see this rise over time, year by year. Next slide. I want to narrow, and this is a report that we started producing about two years ago. It's a quarterly report that is available on our website. It's based off of homeless management information system data, which is one of the best data points that we have in the region to really understand the trends in overtime, what is happening. This quarterly report does look at monthly trends when we produce it on a quarterly basis. It also breaks down how many people are experiencing homelessness, how many people are coming into the system, leaving the system, and also different demographics and subpopulations, like families, veterans, older adults, and youth. It's more reflective of the number, and we can use it to evaluate throughout the year and really look at where are we headed, kind of as we go. So I'm gonna, our last quarterly report, if we jump to the next slide, is from June 2023, we saw 6,349 households experiencing homelessness, which is 8,405 people in those households. This is a 34% increase in households since June of 2021. And you see kind of on that slide, the breakdown of singles versus families, although our families at 636 still are a higher number of people. It's just about 2,400 individuals within those families. From that report, we also see that we have more people coming into homelessness than leaving homelessness. I know Mayor Giles has continued to use this data point of we have 19 people coming in for every 10 people finding housing, and on average, we have 970 new households coming in each month, while we are only housing about 511 households on any given month out of our system. Because we, of all the different market pressures and things that we talked about kind of leading up to this, we have more folks coming into homelessness than we can get back placed into housing and into sustainable housing. Over the past year, so I mentioned at any, in the month of June, we saw 8,405 people, but throughout the course of the year, that's 28,603 unique people that have been served in the past year through our different, through our homeless response system. So homelessness is constantly fluctuating. We know folks are coming in from an unstable situation, we're trying to get them back to a stable housing situation, but it's difficult to look at point in time rather than throughout the course of the year, how many different folks we are serving. Across the region, we also know there are not enough shelter beds compared to the need. As I mentioned, we had 4,734 sheltered, but we have 9,642 total people based off of point in time count. So we have way more people than we're able to get inside. Our family waitlist is currently seven weeks long to get into shelter, so those are folks who have expressed, I need to get into shelter, I don't have a safe place to stay, or I am unsheltered and living in my car, and there is seven weeks before we can even get them in the front door of the shelter. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, since 2020, we've increased shelter by 44%. We're really proud of this, of how much work has gone in from a regional perspective, something we've been spending a lot of time at MAG and with regional council, talking about and really saying homelessness is an issue that we all need to address together. The majority of that shelter is still in Phoenix, but definitely looking to continue to expand outward as the region continues to grow. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Lindsey.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Spillsbury has a question.
I don't know if we wanted to wait till the whole presentation was over, or can I ask her questions onto this part? When you say the homeless response system, is that regional, the whole county, like, so you're, you're taking into consideration all of the different resources in each city?
Correct. Our homeless response system is everything from street outreach, folks that are going in, engaging with people experiencing homelessness, to shelter, so both emergency shelter, transitional housing, or bridge housing, and then into our rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing that we're moving folks into, as well as kind of diverting folks out of those different systems at all the different points, we're trying to get folks, as soon as we can identify a stable place for them to call home, let's get them into that. And so that could be rental assistance for one month, rather than kind of sustained support, too.
And so 970 new households coming in somewhere across the region?
Correct.
Okay, and then your, the, since 2020, the increased shelter by 44%, that's not counting like the Scottsdale program that just was approved, or the Tempe Hotel that was just approved, or our potential, like, those wouldn't be included in that, right?
Correct. That's just beds that have gone live since 2020, so that would include like off-the-streets, but it wouldn't include this new hotel.
Okay, and then I just have to bring this up, since I went on the point in time count, which was a, it's a great experience every year, but it was super, super cold this year, and it was so early, I just kept thinking if we started two hours later, people might unburrow themselves from wherever they're hiding, and we would have found more. Like, I just feel like the numbers are off because it was so cold. But was it colder than it is normally, or I just, I don't know, I just thought I'd bring that up?
Yeah, thank you for asking, Councilor Spillsbury. It was really cold, I was out there too this year. We, it is often very cold, we're all bundled up. We did have a freeze warning in effect, but we're within a couple degrees of that typically pretty, pretty much every year. Also, remember, this happens across the country, so there are folks in snow that are doing this, and so we are continuously refining how we do the count. We used to do it at night, the night before, rather than in the morning, but we take into consideration safety, making sure that we can get volunteers safely there, making sure we don't have too much interspersment, so oftentimes, folks are moving, going to their job, and then we don't count them if we start too late, too. So it, it's a delicate balance.
So, and I know you have to do it on that day and everything, and I've, I've talked to people about this, but, so is there room to move it back an hour or something? Like, I thought even like an hour would make a difference.
Yeah, we're definitely in considerations. We're actually starting the planning next week, so I will bring it up with my staff and continue to reevaluate.
I will go again in January if it's an hour later, I'm just kidding. I'll go whatever you decide, but, okay. And I just want to thank you, because this is really helpful data as we move forward with decisions, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we leave point in time, it, it seems, again, I, I've participated as well, I think it's a wonderful thing that we do it, but it does seem pretty arbitrary, and it also seems to, how many volunteers did we have this year versus last year versus the year before? I mean, if you have half the number of volunteers out looking for people, and you have a less-than-dramatic increase, shouldn't you, how does that play into it?
Yeah, so part of our volunteer, we did increase volunteers this year, thanks Mayor Giles. We had about 1,200 volunteers that went out this year across the region. That's a combination of trained outreach workers, nonprofit volunteers, and also public volunteers and folks like you. We, the previous year, we had about 1,050, so we did increase volunteers. A lot of the volunteer breakup is how much area you have to cover during your volunteer count comparatively if we have less volunteers, so we are still covering all of the different areas of the region. We are, this year, really excited, we're going to roll out training through our learning management system to be able to have everybody have the same consistent training and hopefully have as much consistency across the region as possible. It is as good as our training is for our volunteers, which is why we don't love the point in time count number as a data point, but really continue to do it as a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And that's really why we lean more into the homelessness trends report. That is the data source that we continue to refine over time. We know we're engaging with more folks. Those are folks who are directly engaging with a service provider, and even our folks who don't want to engage with a service provider, but we continue to go back and say, hey, can I get to know you better, and can I start to work with you, and can I get you referred to a partner agency for what, what you need and what your services are? So that may be, it's different for every single person. For a family, it may be we need to get you into shelter right away. For somebody who is engaged on the street, who's been homeless a long time, maybe the first five times, it's just a bottle of water, but time number six, they may say, okay, I'm ready to go to shelter. And so all of that is recorded in the homeless management information system and gives us a much more rich data source to pull from.
Thank you.
Quick question on the, the trend report. The inputs for that, you mentioned are mainly service providers, are, are other entities also engaged in, in those, that information?
Yeah, our homeless management information system, we have over 1,200 users across Maricopa County alone, at 72 different partner agencies, and over 750 unique projects within that system. We're constantly trying to engage more partners to get into the homeless management information system. It is primarily kind of your shelter provider. A New Leaf, for example, that you heard earlier, they enter all of their data into HMI-S. And then for folks, as we've identified, say, they're running like a pop-up with food and things like that, we're consistently trying to get more of those folks into the HMI-S system, but have done a really good job of pulling those partners in.
And as far as the, the trends, as far as unhoused, you know, you hear various different numbers out there as far as the, the overall amount, but definitely the, the unsheltered amount, which would you say as far as the, especially, like, the key indicator trend points of, of data that we should be focusing on, that for us to make sure we develop these strategies that, that we, you know, help bring about some of these services here locally? What would you say?
Yeah, I think there's a number of indicators, and we worked, Lindsey and her team consistently on kind of what data to pull. We're looking at shelter numbers, so do we have a place to get them inside, and then from shelter, where are they exiting to? So making sure we have a positive exit, so that's going to be whether they're getting reconnected with family or friends, or renting an apartment on their own because they were able to grow income, or moving into a housing program that subsidizes them for a certain amount of time before they're able to afford it on their own. And so we're looking at how many, how many shelter beds are available, where are folk, how are people coming into the system and out of the system? So those are kind of, those are the three points that are on our first page, is how many people are actively in the system, what, who is coming in, and then who is going out, and how do we continue to get more folks? We want our in to be less and our out to be more, kind of simple math, but much more complicated on the ground.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a question. You and I talked about this, the, the tracking, the in and out is, is difficult, it's very fluid, right? And that you don't always know those who, do you feel pretty confident that that's an accurate number of people who have notified you, or have these, have created these relationships and know, and have let agencies know that we are now not unsheltered anymore, or, I mean, how, how confident are you on that number?
I would say if anything, I'm confident that we're undercounting our success. I think often more people, we know, we don't, we don't mark it as a success until we know for sure they are leaving and going to a positive exit, and so there's probably folks that do go back to Mom in Ohio and don't tell us they went to Mom in Ohio, and that was actually a success. And so we don't see them come back into the system, so we're looking at that number consistently, but we don't know for sure. Most people, I think the example I used when we talked is an emergency room. You often don't tell the emergency room nurse, like, I'm leaving, I'm good to go. Normally, you just leave, and that was not a great time in your life, and so you don't necessarily want to go back to that situation. And so we are consistently looking at numbers and figuring out how do we get that better, working with case managers to really build that rapport with clients to be able to know that they went back to Mom in Ohio, but it is a constant data point that we look to improve. I will say we are definitely not undercounting our negative exits. I would say that as soon as we see them come back into our system, we're trying to figure out why, what can we do differently, what does that look like to improve those outcomes? What does that look like to improve those outcomes?
Thank you. Before we proceed, other questions for Katie, Council? Ms. Duff, any questions?
No, not at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you so much, Katie. Now we are moving on to more information about policing and homelessness. And Chief Wessing will take that away.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thanks for having us here today. Today, I just wanted to give just a brief snapshot of what we're seeing on the street level and the impact on the men and women that are responding to those that are experiencing homelessness. We have experienced a significant increase in the folks that we come in contact, especially starting in 2018 to 2019. And then with the pandemic and some legislative judicial issues that came in, as was mentioned already by Council, we started to struggle with finding resources. And we saw across not only our region, but also in other major cities, the issue with encampments and how some cities were dealing with them, or rather, not dealing with them. And with the sort of supportive city management and Council then, we decided to take a much more proactive approach to how we dealt with the issues. Really, our approach with, once off the streets program started, allowed us a resource that we didn't have before, and that was to prevent encampments from really beginning in the first place and taking root not only in public spaces, our parks, our alleys, but also in many areas like our rights of way with the railroad that went through the city and some private areas in state land that bordered our city. And so, you know, our approach for years was just simply by complaints, and that was calls for service. And now what we're seeing is close to a 40% increase in just our proactive approach. So when you see the number of calls for service, that's a breakdown of both not only calls that come in from constituents or businesses that are complaining, but also our officers that are out there strategically working on this challenge specifically. The very first slide is just a very brief overview of 2022 and '23, but this isn't the entire department's approach. This is just specific to our proactive efforts, which includes a couple facets. We've added additional resources to our community action officers in all the divisions, which I know members of Council are familiar with. We've increased the number of bike officers that specifically work the light rail corridor from the far west side of the city to Gilbert, specifically dealing with not just the transit issues, but also those dealing with homelessness. And then, of course, our homeless outreach project, which is outside of our officers' normal duties. They are assigned to work specific hotspots throughout the city that are identified by yourselves, as well as community leaders and folks, business leaders that are seeing homelessness and encampments pop up. And you'll notice just in that period of time, there's over 1,200 contacts by this small group of officers. Now, that doesn't mean 12,000 individual people, because many times, we're contacting the same individuals multiple times. But I think what's important to note that 46% of those contacts have involved some type of human or judicial service. In past, it was if there wasn't a law that was being broken, we tried to encourage them to move along, but we really had no services to provide them, and that was really not a police department really role. But now, in collaboration with all of our city partners and nonprofits, we now have the ability to present those services in hopes of actually getting them off the streets entirely. And quite frankly, that's been successful over the last couple of years. And I just wanted to highlight 2023, just so you can see the, really a breakdown of what those contacts are. 35% of those contacts result in some form of enforcement action, either a citation into community court, or booking for misdemeanor felony crimes, or some other referral to judicial services. And then you can see the breakdown of shelter, which is at 25%. And then there's a large mental and both medical related referrals that we find in the communities experiencing homelessness. Finally, I just wanted to give you a breakdown of the total of the homeless-related calls. In 2020, we started to track calls with a reporting code that identifies someone related to that incident was experiencing homelessness. Prior to that, we didn't track that data. And you can see, and we have it split up by district for this month, we're averaging about 1,000 calls per month across the city that have a homeless component to it. That accounts to, by total, about 4% of the total calls for service, which include calls into 911 or not emergency line, but also our proactive work. And I think what's important to note, with the ability to access the resources of off the streets, 44% of those contacts are proactive. That's our officers that are out there seeing someone experiencing homelessness and stopping and contacting them outside of an actual calls for service. And so we're going to continue our proactive efforts to prevent the encampments from happening in the first place. I think what's been exceptionally successful over the past several years is the collaboration with all city departments. For years, sometimes it was really a one-sided approach with law enforcement, but we brought in every department, from transportation, environmental sustainability, our nonprofits, to try to tackle this process versus it being just a law enforcement issue. We are working together, collaborating with all of our partners. And I have myself and several members of our staff that actually work in the divisions if you have any questions about this specific information.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Riedia.
Chief, I know, how do you track park ranger call or proactive contacts with park rangers? I'm not sure this is part of that data. But I know our parks, specific parks in west and downtown Mesa have seen an increase over the years on homeless activity. And so wondering if there's some overlap, or is there a different tracking system for our increase? And we've increased park rangers throughout the last several years as well. So I'm assuming we've had a lot more contacts with them as well.
Vice Mayor, actually, that's correct. This data is specific to members of the Mesa Police Department. We do have one of our park ranger supervisors here that can answer that question specifically, if you'd like that answered.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So we utilize a G I S tracking system, much like the police department has a coding system for all of their calls. I don't, we don't have that provided in these slides, obviously, but I can certainly provide those to you at a later date.
Perfect. And I'm assuming there's overlap sometimes with y'all getting assisted by P D, right?
Yes, Vice Mayor. I mean, we do work very closely with our community action officers and our bike officers on any of the park-related issues, specifically related to homelessness. So there's been an increase of collaboration, sharing of our radios, our report-writing system, and obviously, when there's a need for P D, we respond to their requests as well. And those would be captured under the calls for service. Then we enter a call for service related to it, so there could be a little bit of overlap. But certainly, we are working closely together with our partners within parks.
I'm just curious, you say you use a G I S system to track homelessness in parks?
Correct.
I don't, I don't understand how you would do that. And I know we have, we have installed cameras in the parks, and our real-time crime center is monitoring those. Do we have cameras in, probably not in all of our parks, because we have hundreds of parks?
That's correct, Mayor. We do not have cameras in all the parks. They are in several strategic parks, and we can even have mobile cameras that we can move to locations if we see a rise of issues in parks, but they're not in all the parks.
But your, your question is how?
I know it's G I S. I think it's a system we have when they log in on their incidents. They, would you talk a little bit about the system you have and how it?
We can track where the rangers are.
Well, where they identify someone.
Yeah, it's kind of like a daily log system that helps us track where we're at, what we're doing, and the information within all of our calls, all of our contacts, and just assist us with tracking all of the information properly. And it generates a G I S mapping system for us to tell us where all of those problems are and what we were doing in those areas.
So you can break it down by park?
Absolutely.
Time of day, day of the week, they can identify all that.
So when you have an interaction or a problematic interaction, that's a data point that gets tracked?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Council, other questions for Chief? Yes.
So on the, I guess it's slide 30?
There's a lot of slides.
Yes. So explain this to me. So you said 35% get booked or go to community court?
That's correct.
And what, 35% of, what is the total? What, are we back at the 12,000 contacts?
That is correct.
So of the 12,000 contacts, 35% get booked for some sort of crime?
Or cited or referred into some of judicial process, whether it's community court. It's a small percentage that are actually booked. And you can see the breakdown. It's very small, at 6% for felony bookings. And there's, I don't see the percentage for misdemeanors. That's the smallest portion of it. A lot of it's referred into community court, which is our, obviously, our largest, which is at 19% of that number.
So who is, who is tracking this? How do you, how do you get this number?
So we have a data analyst that works out of one of our stations. So as our officers, as part of what the parks do, we have a logging system. Not only are we tracking the contact via a code in a records management system, but then there's a, if you will, a checkbox for every type of incident, whether it's a long-form complaint, a citation. There's a log that these folks are filling out, because this is specific to those that are working on our homeless outreach project, for the type of resource that they provided, or if they refused the resource as well. And then that's put into our, basically, our data system, and we pull reports out of that month.
So you said the homeless outreach project, that is separate from just the day-to-day homeless contacts that are made?
That is correct.
The homeless outreach project is just a certain time period that?
So what we started two years ago, Councilmember Goforth, was we brought a group of officers, and it's funded by overtime. So it's not, you know, in addition to what they have to do when they're answering normal calls for service. And they respond to areas in the city that we receive, you know, information from analysts in the district, basically heat maps that tells where these groups of homeless may be gathering. And they specifically respond to those areas, and that's all that they deal with. It's also our community action officers, which is one of their primary functions, and our bike team, which predominantly does that on the west side of the city. Those three groups are gathering data on their efforts, and that's what you're seeing on the first slide with the bar graph, and then, of course, the graph that you're referring to with the percentages.
But Chief Wessing, you have patrol officers who, on just their, the regular patrol, may also come in contact, but that's not included here.
That's correct.
So this is just, I have, you're saying, these are individual, these are specific efforts to be, we call it proactive. I think a patrol officer who engages with homeless is being proactive. But this is like a defined group that's going out for this purpose.
That's correct. And, you know, during the pandemic, we had to stop all proactive efforts. And so there was a significant reduction in our patrol officer's ability to actually impact the challenges that we had. And so because of this, we actually designated these groups to specifically do proactive work, which is outside the calls for service that you predominantly would see or traditionally see officers responding to.
So it, so for the past two years, those three groups have been tracking, when they come in contact, they have been tracking where that person ends up, whether they get cited, whether they go to the shelter, whether they have mental health or medical health? That's what you're saying?
That is correct.
That every one of those points have been tracked for the last two years by those three groups?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ms. Spilsbury.
Is there an overlap on this slide at all? Would, could someone receive two of these services or something, and then would it just be counted for both? Like, whatever services offered goes on this?
It certainly could be, Councilmember Spilsbury. I don't know, and I don't have a specific incidence of that, but I could imagine that if we had someone that was experiencing a medical event and then also had a criminal element to that exposure, there could be an overlap of those two, where they did bring in Mesa Fire Medical Department to deal with the issue. And even if they were transported, there could be the, that's where you see like the long-form section. What that means is we can't take them to a holding facility because of either mental illness or medical issue. Then they're referred later, once they're released, and it's not like an actual physical arrest. So certainly, there is an overlap.
And I wanted to point out, one of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the benefits of this homeless outreach program that you're doing is that the officers who are out there are becoming familiar with who they're running across. And so then they might be able to have some sort of a relationship with that person. So then, on the fifth or sixth contact, that is when they trust them to decide, okay, now I want to get service, service. So I think, because that's always been my thing, is like, there has to be a relationship. We have to treat them as individuals and as a human being, right? And so that matters. And so I think that's one of the benefits of how you guys are doing it now, is that there's some familiarity there.
Councilmember Spilsbury, I absolutely agree with that, but it's also secondary to that. Obviously, many of the folks that we deal with on the street level are very resistant to services, period. Especially if it's law enforcement as their first point of contact. And we've experienced that. But what we're seeing is now, not only do some of the individuals are more comfortable with those officers that they see every day, but those officers themselves are more familiar with what resources are available to them. If you just have a patrol officer who's just fresh out of the academy, he or she may not be familiar with or comfortable with that process. Where now, we have these officers that are trained. They have, you know, everything from cards to hand individuals with lists of all the resources. They have friendships and partnerships with some of our nonprofits where they know exactly who to call, you know, when it's a specific issue that people are dealing with. I mean, we've even had times when officers have called family outside of state because now folks are, you know, talking to us, and we're able to get them travel to their home that they've been separated from. So there's success stories like that, but it's absolutely a positive note on utilizing this type of a proactive enforcement versus just whatever officer may show up after dealing with, you know, calls all day.
Okay. I love it. Thank you.
I have a question about this slide, Chief. So would it be fair to say that this slide suggests that a third of the time that our police interact with homeless folks, there's a criminal enforcement component to it? Two-thirds, and again, Ms. Spilsbury correctly points out, there could be some overlap. But two-thirds of the time, they're engaging in services, connecting them to shelter, mental health, physical health. But then a third of the time, there's some criminal enforcement accident involved.
Mayor, that's absolutely correct.
So how, how many interactions did the Mesa Police Department have with people experiencing homelessness last year?
You know, if you go to the last slide, you'll kind of, or, excuse me, the first slide, it was 12,000 for 2022 and where we are year-to-date in 2023. And it's broken down by month. You'll see on the first slide, I don't have the exact totals for '22 versus '23, but that's the overall total of 12,000 contacts.
For the last full year, 12,000?
And this year also, where we are in 2023.
So that's 2022, and so far, in 2023, combined, 12,000 interactions?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Chief. Mr. Riedia.
To go back, some of this information is very helpful. Are we seeing any success? I imagine there's some snowball effect as far as being proactive and the amount of contacts that, you know, a particular individual might have had in the, in the future with, you know, your regular patrol officer that's out there. Is there any success? Because I know in the, in the past, you know, Mesa's been, you know, tried various different strategies, enforcement only, or, you know, combination. So are we having success in the approach that we're, that we have right now over the last two years? It seems like it, but I don't know, in the lens of a P D, what, what would you say as far as any improvements between the, the different strategies that we've tried in the past?
Vice Mayor, I think the best way that I can answer that is really yes, but it's kind of multifaceted. Because what we experienced is the traditional homeless population that we knew, that we experienced day-to-day. You know, I have patrol officers that see the same people that they've been dealing with for 20 years. Not necessarily in a negative way, just that they're experiencing homelessness. But what we saw over the last four years is an influx of people from other parts of the country, quite frankly, that we didn't know, and they didn't know a region and what was available. And so we had to come up with a plan that it couldn't be 100% enforcement because we can't arrest our way out of the problem first and foremost. And that's when we really started working with community court. And that brought in some options where they could work through their system to get identification and, and try, because otherwise, it's this cycle of arrest, warrant, arrest, warrant. And that's what we saw traditionally. Where now, the success that we're seeing is with utilizing the resources with the off-the-streets program and other nonprofits, is to get them off the streets because we've encountered families now, where instead, it used to be a lot of drug-related, you know, mental illness-related homeless. Now we're seeing more families, single mothers with children, where we have multiple nonprofits that are lined up that we have now the ability to connect with directly at the officer level versus we would make a phone call at dispatch and hope something was available. Now we have phone numbers to multiple nonprofits. So I would say that question is, that's where our success is, is we have so much more available to our officers to deal with the individual that may not be committing a crime. And that's the challenge that we have in the communities, is they want And that's the challenge that we have in the communities is they want people out of their parks because they feel uncomfortable. There's a perception that there's criminal behavior and our officers just can't sweep them out of there because they have a right to be there if they're not committing a crime. Now we have an option when there isn't criminal activity to provide them a resource to potentially get them out of that area. So it also satisfies the community concerns and some of the business leaders that we've spoken to as well.
Thank you. Chief, a moment ago, you said now we are seeing more families and women with children. Can you quantify that at all or is, how, what prompts you to say that?
Mayor, I don't have a number because we don't track that specifically. This is anecdotal evidence that comes in from our patrol officers. And specifically, when we have a success and we're reaching out, I can think of one example where we have one nonprofit called Angels on Patrol, where we had a, in the summer heat, we had a mother with a small child that had just came here to Arizona and we were able to reach out to this nonprofit and we were able to put her into a hotel directly. So the officers were transporting them directly to a hotel that was funded by this nonprofit. So we weren't seeing that 10 years ago, but I can't quantify that, Mayor, with, with an exact number, but we are seeing those successes.
Okay. Thank you. Council, more questions? Ms. Duff, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and chime in, excuse me, a little bit. You know what? I made a visit to PosdeCristo and talked to the navigators there and just on this subject alone, they said they have families and seniors that they turn away regularly because they have no options for them and it just breaks their heart because, you know, they're homeless and we don't have enough options. So as was said, that for every person we help, we're turning away two people, but they're seeing more in these classifications of families and seniors and we don't have enough options. So also, let me go back, on the homeless-related calls on slide number 31, the percentage change, is that over last year?
No, that's, I'm not really sure what that 99% means. As a matter of fact, Commander Beaton? It's month to month. It's not one year to the other.
Okay. Okay. And I noticed there was a decline in August, but I know that we also had a couple of heat relief centers, one that I visited, and when they were really housing a lot of people during the day, during, during our summer, getting them out of the parks and such, and they, it was a point of refuge. And hopefully we can continue some programs, but I know it was just only for the summer on that. Also, when we do an inquiry with an individual experiencing homelessness, I think we do ask them, or at least in the point in time, we ask, where did you, you know, how long have you been in Mesa? Were you a year ago, things like that? Do we have any data as far as that?
Councilmember Duff, we do not specifically ask those questions. Sometimes it comes out organically in the contact, but we do not track that specific data with our contacts. I know we have several members of the police department that participate in the point in time count, especially our community action officers, but we do not track that specific data.
Okay. All right. And I think a majority of the criminal citations, I think, are trespassing related. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is the largest majority.
Yeah. And then on page, on slide number 38, which I know is beyond what we're looking at today, but I thought it was interesting out of the hotline calls, only nine percent were resistant. So thank you very much for all the work. I really appreciate it. Things are so much more organized and orchestrated in how we serve people and it's been very effective, especially in my district. I've seen the difference and I heard the difference and yet it is quite challenging and I can't imagine if we didn't have this program. So thank you.
Thank you. I think, well, Chief, I don't remember if it was you that said this, but I want to follow up on one more thing that you said. You said with regard to dealing with encampments, that you're, the Off the Streets program, I think you said, is allowing you to respond to encampments before they take off or become entrenched. Maybe you or Mr. Smith or someone can, why is the Off the Streets program the asset that allows you to be more aggressive or proactive in enforcing encampments?
Sure. Mayor and council, and this goes back to, and you made a comment regarding Boise v. Martin. And maybe as I answer this, I also like to go back one step before that because as we talked all these stats, I think it was about six or seven years ago that the police department, the city prosecutor's office and the court came together to create community court. And at that time and still today, many, many communities don't have that and the services that are provided through that. And after we started community court, many departments were looking at how to provide those services before someone got cited. And then Boise v. Martin came out. And that, and that case came out, I believe it was in 2019, and that decision basically at its crux says that, and it's an Eighth Amendment, the U.S. Constitution case, that says that you can't cite somebody criminally for being homelessness, for urban camping or urban camping type of violations, sort of trespass type violations, unless you're able to afford them shelter or a bed. And so at that time, the city prosecutor's office, PD, came together and also with Lindsay and Natalie's group to start to look for solutions. Natalie and Lindsay's group were already looking for homelessness solutions, right? And so the, the ability for PD to be able to say before they cited that we have a bed available. And so that was critical for those type of citations. And so that, we reacted quickly after Boise v. Martin and set that into place and we've continued to set that into place. And so that's what has allowed the city of Mesa, unlike many cities that do not have this in place, we're, we're able to enforce our urban camping and trespassing laws because shortly after that decision, through multiple departments working together, we were able to set aside beds so that before officers make any citations, they make a request, do you, would you prefer to go to a bed? And if they say yes, we will provide them with shelter. And so that's sort of how we have been able to react and, and other cities have not over the, over the last several years. And, and that case law has evolved, as many people know, and there's a more recent case involving what's called Grants Pass. But that hasn't altered our ability to enforce urban camping and trespassing for all these years.
All right. Thank you. Lindsay, I don't know if we cut you off in the middle of your presentation. Is there more?
There's more.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And just to Councilmember Duff's previous question, HMIS that Katie has talked about this morning, the Homeless Management Information System. It does track the last permanent address of the individual that is receiving the services, also their last permanent ZIP code and how long they have been at those locations. So that is something that is tracked in the data. All right. I will get into some more data related to our Off the Streets program and some of the other services that we're providing through the Office of Homeless Solutions. As a reminder, this is our pathway to housing and we are focused with Off the Streets. It really focuses on that first step, the emergency step, which we've had really been focusing on since 2020. As a reminder, this program, Off the Streets, has existed for three years in Mesa. It is a temporary housing program for people experiencing homelessness and we really do prioritize referrals from our first responders. So our police, fire and parks, and I have to just say, all of the officers that use it, the park rangers, they really understand this program. They have a lot of conversations. They are building relationships and I see that they really care about this work and know how to use this resource. So I just want to acknowledge them for that and thank them for all of the hard work they do. It does allow us to enforce urban camping, as we were just speaking about, and we really, through the lifetime of the program, have prioritized serving Mesa's most vulnerable individuals. That includes seniors, families, a lot of families with young children. We have, our youngest client is now a two-day-old baby that was just born while living at the hotel and our oldest is 92. So we have a full spectrum of people with disabilities of all age ranges, families, singles, couples. It really is a wide spectrum, but we are seeing more and more families and seniors as Chief Westing had, had mentioned as well. This is a closed campus model, so similar to what East Valley Men's Center campus, what that discussion was this morning. There are no walk-up services. This is a closed campus where only referrals are allowed. So you really have to be welcomed in and invited into the campus. You're not allowed to walk in. Case management is provided around the clock with support services from our partner, Community Bridges. And with that comes a lot of rules and requirements as people enter the program. They do sign a commitment form just to say they agree to the rules of the shelter, that they understand what they are and that they will abide by them. So we do have a lot of accountability built into the program. And as you're aware, up to 90-day stay is our, our timeframe for this program. Some of this data you have seen before, but there are some new points that we've added for this presentation. We are up to almost 1,900 clients served over the three years with this program. Of those 1,900, the 1,871, 64% of our clients report one or more disability. Many of them have more than one that they report. 39% have a physical disability. 21% are survivors of domestic violence and 12% are age 62 and older. We are holding out 49% of women served in the program and this is a new data point. We have served 276 families in the lifetime of our program. And that's the number below there, the 19% are youth and under. So those are kids coming from the families that we serve. This is also a new data point. 16% of our clients are coming in with employment at their time of entry. And then there are programs built into helping that, that remaining population really connect to employment if they're able to. We also, as a best practice, really focus on keeping people with their pets. We have had limited pet rooms in the beginning of the program and so 7% of our clients have been pet owners. We've housed about 72 pets with their clients and we've been able to expand our pet rooms so we can accommodate and keep people with their pets, which really ends up helping as a best practice helps, helps people be more successful in the program. And 73% is our success rate, meaning that someone in our program is going to the next positive place on their housing path. Reasons for homelessness that are reported through this program, unsafe environment, which includes a dispute with a family member or a roommate, divorce, 44% report that as the main reason for their homelessness. And the other top situation is financial or unemployment. We have had many, many seniors for this reason, I think, are really coming to us. I spoke directly to a woman. She was 67 years old. She was still working and said, I want to keep working. I want to be self-sufficient. But she had lost one of her, her opportunities for employment and so she was living, trying to sleep at night in a laundromat and just make, find a safe place to be. And so luckily we were able to get her into our program, but we're seeing more and more of that. Medical, substance use and judicial are the other lower percentage reasons for homelessness. We're also really looking at exit destinations and building this in as a data point into our statistics. We will build this out as we move forward, but what we know right now is that as people leave those positive places as they go, which Katie mentioned some of these this morning in her presentation, about a little over a third of the time, they're going to another shelter. And so that's their next step. They are connected to some services with us and then they go to maybe East Valley Men's Center, maybe another shelter in the community. Many are also connected to housing vouchers. So about 10% are, are going into a place of their own based on support with a housing voucher. Another 10% are going with family and friends. So they are reconnecting with a family member, they are reconnecting with a friend. A lot of times these are permanent situations. Sometimes they are temporary as well. About 6% of our clients are self, are going into self-paid housing. So they just needed some time to accumulate more funding to, to get their own apartment or something of that nature. And likely they don't qualify for voucher support, but they are self-sufficient when they leave the program and, and are self-paying for their next step on their housing plan. We do also connect people to Bridge Housing and medical long-term care facilities or group homes. So this is a new data point that, it is limited. We, we just have about a month's worth of data and we are continuing to dissect this and get more information. So this is showing the Off the Streets public safety hotline. So when officers have someone that they'd like to refer into the program or a park ranger has someone they want to refer in, they have a direct hotline to Community Bridges that answers the phone. And the goal is they respond to that officer in the field and that they can provide services to the individual in need. So what this is telling me is that about 75% of the time, 74%, we are, Community Bridges is bringing them either into the Off the Streets program or another program. A lot of times they will take someone directly to East Valley Men's Center or they will stay in one of our temporary cots for a night or two. And then it really allows Community Bridges to triage, really better understand the individual's need and where their best placement might be. And so all of these calls, it doesn't mean we're housing every single person at the hotel, but it is a process to really support first responders in the field and get people connected to services and shelter. Alternative services include a medical facility or a rehab facility or something of that nature. And again, this is, this is new data. This is something that I'm really looking at with my teams. We meet regularly with community action officers and park rangers and Community Bridges to kind of take a look at how, how this hotline is working, how we can do it better together. One thing that this shows is that 9% of the time, so about seven people, we were not able to house because there was no room available. So we are at full capacity many times. We have really looked at this number and recently added some new cots so that our goal is that that's never happening, that we are able to help 100% of the time. This is also new data. So our homeless resource line that my team has, has created, Diana Lopez has created. We also wanted to just give a shout out to Nicole Van Wi. She's part of our, the city's IT team and has really helped us fine tune this and continues to help us with that. But this data is showing that of all the calls received over a three-month period, we received almost 700 calls. And 48% of those calls were for a homeless resource. 13% were for the hotel purchase, so we have, had made this line available for that project as well. 2% were for heat relief and 37% we were able to transfer to a navigator to assist. So that is typically COPA Health that is providing navigation services and has agreed to take those calls. Typically, they're answering that line from the PosdeCristo location and they are walking people through services and hopefully connecting them to a shelter, helping them with ID and other, other services of that nature. We know within the 48% of homeless resources, people are really asking for a variety of services. They're asking for shelter, affordable housing, information about employment services. There have been many calls about rent and utility assistance. People that are on the verge of tipping over into homelessness are calling this line and asking for resources for that type of thing. Also legal assistance with tenant legal issues, how to get documents. And, and people are asking, really promoting this line as a way for people to give help as well. So those that want to volunteer or donate or have questions about how to help someone are calling this line too. So in wrapping up, key observations that Mesa is making about all of the information that Katie has provided and all of the trends in the region that we know, we, we do have a crisis in homelessness, that for every 10 people housed, there are 19 people coming into the system. We know that we need more services to, to stabilize these numbers and more people, to, to have more people being housed than newly becoming homeless. The pandemic has really exasper- The pandemic has really exacerbated evictions, resulting in more first-time homelessness and that cost burdened within the household that Katie mentioned, anywhere from 30 to 50% of income going to housing for many families. The economic impacts have been hard on everyone, perhaps harder on the lower-income communities. And we need both responsive and preventative strategies for the region and for Mesa. For Mesa, we know homelessness continues to increase here. We hear from residents that they want a city that this is a citywide problem, they want the city to help address and reduce homelessness. We do have an influx of federal funding that has really helped us to provide new services in helping our whole city make some progress, but that has not been enough. We still need more shelter beds. And to be a good partner in that regional approach, we know that Phoenix has more than 75% of shelter beds in the region. Police and park rangers are seeing success in the field, building relationships, using human services and really understanding those services and partnerships, and not only relying just on enforcement or arrests. Mesa is still one of the most affordable cities in the region, so we are very proud of that. But we know we need more attainable housing options and prevention programs and services. With that, we will open it up for any more questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury.
I have a question about Phoenix, I guess, so maybe Katie, if that is you, but if they have 75% of the shelter beds in the region, but they still have huge problems with urban camping, and what's what's happening there?
I are part of the significant increase in shelter that's happened, so that 44%, a lot of that has been in Phoenix. They're continuing to open new shelters. They are opening one on Monday. I'm looking at Mr. Hughes as he's helping to open that shelter in partnership with them. And so, yeah, continuing, they're hitting kind of similar barriers that Mr. Smith talked about around the need to enforce while not having enough shelter beds available in the region for folks to go to. So it's a constant kind of challenge. We've kind of continued to also identify, as Lindsay mentioned at the end, we need both prevention and places for people to go after shelters. So we really shouldn't have enough shelter for every single person because we want to have this flow through the system. And so right sizing our shelter and then putting resources into both sides so we can get folks quickly back into housing, because shelter is a great resource for the short term, but we don't want it to become a long-term solution.
And so generalizing, but most of the reason for the urban camping would then be that there is not enough beds available over that they just don't want the services, is what you're saying?
Correct. As Phoenix has kind of started to address the area around the Human Services Campus, there's over an 80% rate for yes, I will go in. I think Chief Westing described it really well, of a lot of folks do want to go inside, they want the resource, and we didn't have enough of the resource for people to be able to go inside and the right resource for them. I think for for a long time prior to COVID, we had family beds and we had single beds. And so if you were a couple, you had to separate from your partner. And so we've been able to create find more creative solutions that are more responsive to the needs of people in our community. For a very long time, as Lindsay mentioned, we didn't have, if you had a pet, you couldn't go inside with your pet. I am not a pet person, but I have been told that I wouldn't separate from my pet if I was experiencing homelessness. And so finding the things that really meet the person where they're at, being able to respond to that. But yes, we don't have enough shelter for folks. If every single person tomorrow said, I want to be inside, we do not have enough shelter beds for them.
And I'm assuming they do they also have pretty big gaps in their bridge housing as well, like in Phoenix and other areas?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Summers?
So you have a the calls received at the homeless shelter, you made a comment about people call that because they want to donate some money to for people to help with their utility bills or rental?
Councilmember Summers, this is our homeless resource line. So it's just meant for if people want to donate items. It could be financial as well, certainly.
Is is there a tax credit for that, out of curiosity? Has the state implemented a tax credit? So like charter schools, you can donate to a charter school and you get a dollar-for-dollar tax credit? Is there a tax credit for this, for donating to people who need rental assistance or utility assistance?
There, I'm not a tax expert, let me start with that. However, Arizona, you're part of your like 400 for 400 as a single, a lot of nonprofits are enrolled in that. There is not a separate line item tax credit like charter schools for homelessness resources.
Okay, so maybe that's something we could work on from an intergovernmental position?
Unless there it's, I mean, you could donate to a nonprofit.
To a specific nonprofit, yeah, I got that.
That you could get the tax credit.
But that would be an interesting one to to help, because, you know, we're spending a lot of money in the sheltering. There's nine and a half million going to the men's shelter, potentially seven and a half roughly million for a shelter. I get it, there's a need there, but that's not a solution. That's that's a stopgap, right? So helping helping people stay on their feet, it seems we're also going to approve, it looks like, accepting a grant for about $120 million for disabled rental assistance. It's on one of our budget items here.
120 million?
Or I'm sorry, 120,000, thank you, thank you, 120,000.
You solved the problem.
I was, you know, that totally blew my point, which is, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks for waking me up on that. But it's only 120, it's a $120,000 grant, which is great, but it's 120,000 in in assistance to keep people in their homes versus $13 million for the for putting into a shelter. And it seems like there's a huge need to increase the amount of money that that we're receiving for, you know, rental assistance. And unfortunately, I think the city just got back into the business of shutting off utilities as the weather cools and trying to keep those on.
Well, remember, we put in 20, over $20 million in ARPA to help people pay their electric bills.
So that's good, and that's that's ARPA dollars, so. But continue, but those monies are drying up now, so continuing efforts to help people stay in their homes is pay their bills, I think, is a viable pathway, because I'd rather them stay there than end up homeless and then we have to, the society has to figure out how to get them back into a home, and I think that that's even more challenging than trying to keep them there. Anyway, thank you.
Council, other questions? I have a quick question. We've talked a lot about the the number, the telephone number, and just that's the 644-HOPE number, right? 480-644-HOPE.
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Katie, Ms. Goforth asked a question earlier in this meeting about the role that the region was playing and the county was playing in addressing homelessness. And I know MAG has a strategic homeless plan. Can you give us, we know Phoenix is doing a lot, obviously. We'd like to think that Mesa's stepping up as well, but describe what the regional response is to homelessness.
Thanks, Mayor. So Pathways Home, which was passed in December of 2021, after about a year of planning and a lot of conversations with all of the different partners across the region, we've now moved into implementation. That plan in December has three overarching goals. We want to work across the region, everybody needs to be committing regionally. Second, we want to increase safe housing options. And third, we want to increase diverse partnerships across the region. So three steps, I won't go into the 14 substeps that my team has been working on, but really working in partnership. We've dramatically increased shelter, as I mentioned, 44%. We've also increased housing. We had dramatic increases in investments because of the pandemic, over 750 emergency housing vouchers, which were placed here in Mason across the region. We've also been asking for letters of commitment from every jurisdiction signed by city managers. So Mr. Brady signs it on behalf of Mesa. Over $290 million has been committed towards the work of the plan, which is to reduce homelessness in the last three years alone, which is really exciting work. And then one of the biggest things is we need, we cannot do this alone. If we are just using homeless dollars to address homelessness, we are never going to be successful. And so really looking at how do we work with our partners like police and fire, like parks, rangers, who were here earlier, to say that homelessness impacts us all. And so how do we draw bridges and not break bridges and really get folks kind of all working together to move towards that solving of homelessness? As we're moving into strategic planning for the continuum of care, which is another federal source that comes in locally, we're also looking at how do we better bring in faith partners more effectively? How do we bring businesses in more effectively to say, we need a community that really all comes together to say homelessness is a problem that we can together solve?
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, that's a great update and very timely, so we appreciate that. Is there any additional questions or discussion on this item? All right, thank you very much. We will move forward then with our next agenda item, which is.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
No, I was gonna say, I think we've gotten our full measure of effort from you all today, so I think the next item we had, we can just move to Monday, and we'll just do that before the council meeting.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to item 2C. The item 2C is a presentation in a bright direction on allowing new billboards in the city.
That's what I was going to suggest, we just move on, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so 2B, are we going to talk about, is there a presentation on the hotel?
Yes. Sorry, I jumped ahead. Do you want to have a presentation on the hotel, or do you want to do both? I was, sorry, do you want to push both of those off to Monday? I guess that's what I was asking.
I'm supposed to be at a ribbon cutting at 11:30 in South.
Is everybody here?
I want to hear this one. I'm going to be a little close.
Go ahead. No, I'm going to that as well. Which we need a good 20 minutes to drive, but 11:30.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I meant, yeah, we can move both of them to Monday if everybody's going to be here, I don't know.
I'm gonna suggest that we move the move up the time, I'm here Monday. Yeah. Let's, this has been a long meeting, and these are, I don't want to shortchange either one of these or feel like there's a rush on either one of these, so I.
We can just start at 5 o'clock on Monday and do add these two to the study session.
Counsel, does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We will, we'll continue items 2B and 2C then until our study session on Monday.
Right.
Moving on to item 2D is to take action on appointments for boards. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. That passes unanimously. Item 3 is to acknowledge receipts of minutes of of meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury and Mr. Haredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Duff. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, I know today is a big day in the city of Mesa because it is the birthday of our vice mayor, Ms. Haredia. Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. Happy birthday, Frankie. Thanks for letting us celebrate with you.
It's been a fun time. Nowhere else to be.
That's right. Well, happy birthday, we appreciate you. Counsel, other notable things you'd like to share with us? Ms. Spilsbury?
On Saturday, I attended a viewing of Northtown, sponsored by the Arizona Fair Housing Center, and it was on the history of the Washington Escobido neighborhood, which was a segregated neighborhood in Mesa. 20s, 30s, 40s, 50s during that time period, it was fascinating and I learned a lot, so I wanted to thank them for that. And then I also attended the Mesa Contemporary Arts Museum grand opening of their new exhibit and wanted to thank all of the arts and culture staff and our city staff for making that happen. So it's a great exhibit, people should go attend that.
Yes, it is, thank you. Anything else you'd like to share, Counsel? Ms. Duff?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Of course, even though I'm not there, I'm going to chime in. I was at the International Downtown Association Conference last week through the weekend with DMA, which is our downtown Mesa Association, and learning more about the professional work of making downtown a fabulous place to live, work, and play. It was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we we wish you well, we hope you're back with us quickly. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, yeah, again, we'll start probably 5:00 PM on Monday, and then followed by a city council meeting. This weekend, we do have some great events taking place. We have on the 14th, on Saturday, the 14th, from 1:00 to 4:00, we'll be celebrating the 10th anniversary of ThinkSpot at Red Mountain Library, so invite everybody out to that. We've got a lot of demos, 3D printers and cameras and podcasting equipment. We're also going to be having the Celebrate Mesa Fall Festival from at Red Mountain Soccer Pond Complex on Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, so invite everybody out. It's a hugely well-attended event, so invite everybody out to that. And also, I want to let the council know, because I've had, we've had some questions about this, we will be having the grand opening of the Post on Thursday, November 2nd at 10:30, but we want to give the council a sneak preview, and so we're inviting you to come join our department directors on, where am I, October 24th at 11:30, and we'll get the something out to you to join us for lunch. We're going to break in the kitchen, so we'll do that on October 24th, just to have a lunch. We'll have our our meeting and then have you join us afterwards, and we'll give you tours of the building, and then we'll do the public grand opening on November 2nd. So we'll get that information out to you. Thank you.
That's very exciting, it looks really good. I think that's going to be an asset that the community is really going to appreciate. Okay, that concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Thank you. We adjourned.